Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a packed house for our first meeting of 2020. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place for the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting as council and committee, the whole closed meeting, we discussed one item with respect to pending acquisition or disposition of land related to affordable housing, so I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Kylie, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
And that carries. Okay, next we have the approval of the addits, we have the withdrawal of one information report, is there remover for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Ossanik. And that carries. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest from council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on, we have a couple of presentations this evening. First, it's my great pleasure to introduce Connie Abrams, President of the Kingston and District Sports Hall of Fame, who will present the inductees for 2020. Oh, or Mr Jeffries. Just as good.
Mayor Patterson, members of council and special guests. On behalf of President Walter DeCosta and the Board of Governors, it is my honour to present the list of five inductees who will formally become members of our Kingston and District Sports Hall of Fame. I would like to publicly acknowledge and thank the members of our selection committee for all their hard work resulting in the list of five. They had some very difficult decisions to make. The names will be read alphabetically and we ask the inductee or their representative to stand while their bio is being read, and to save time, please hold your applause until everyone is introduced. So, as the saying goes, let's drop the puck, or throw at the first pitch, as they say, let's get started with Roland Billings. A builder in basketball. Born and raised in Kingston, Roland has been a part of the local basketball community for most of his life. He was a member of the Local Referees Association for 37 years, calling games at all levels, from biddy to community college and university basketball, including championship games at the high school and the OC double A levels, as well as travelling to Equaluit to referee the Arctic Basketball Championships in 1989. After retiring from the board as an active member, he was given an honorary life membership in recognition of his contributions. Roland has continued to referee with Special Olympics and the Pete Peterson League, helping to mentor the development of young officials. In 1970/80, he joined the Knights of Columbus Basketball League and as a coach and referee, quickly becoming part of the league executive. And for more than 40 years, he has been involved in what is now the Pete Peterson Basketball League, helping to give 500 children and 100 volunteers each year the chance to learn how much fun the game can be. As well as serving as president for the last 27 years, he is a coach, referee, convener, website administrator, photographer and fundraiser for the league, having been mentored for most of that time by league founder Don Pete Peterson. Roland has been recognised by the province, the City of Kingston, the Kiwanis Club and the Toronto Raptors with an official's award for his work in our basketball community. In 2008, he was presented the Coaching the Coaches Volunteer Sports Administrator Award, a Paul Harris Fellow in 2014, and an honorary diploma from St Lawrence College in 2016 for his volunteer work in basketball and our community. Along with his ongoing basketball commitment, Roland continues to be an active volunteer within the City of Kingston with several groups, including the United Way and the Salvation Army. Roland Billings. Randy Casford. Born in Kingston, Randy excelled as an athlete in baseball, as a player for the Kingston Ponies, and in basketball at Kiwi CBI, and in hockey as well. But it is his work and his skill as a coach, teaching the game of baseball to so many young athletes, that has set him apart. He is described as having a gift of teaching the game, promoting a love of baseball in the kids, and showing them that they owed it to their organisation, their coaches and their teammates to give their best. Randy is regarded as an excellent pitching coach and some of the best young arms to come out of Kingston were taught by him. Several earning scholarships to US colleges, and one being signed to a Major League Baseball contract recently with the San Diego Padres. He has also served as a scout for the Toronto Blue Jays, who recognised his eye for talented players. Randy started coaching baseball in 1983, but really hit a stride in the early 90s with the Kingston Baseball Association, Queen's University, the Kingston Ponies and the Kingston Thunder, winning a New York State Championship with the Ponies, and representing the city at provincial championships several, several times. Randy has also been an active hockey coach for many years, and has been a basketball coach with the Lakers organisation. In 2015, when the Ganonakway Junior Sea Islander Hockey Team was put up for sale, Randy stepped in to save the franchise, serving as an assistant coach and general manager with the team. Randy Casford has been giving back and helping local athletes for more than 30 years. He has been recognised by the Kiwanis Club for his work in baseball, has been the recipient of the President's Award from the Kingston Minor Hockey Association, and acknowledged with a dedication award by the Kingston Lakers Basketball Club. And he won several awards during his playing days in baseball, basketball and hockey. Randy Casford. Jana Hefford. Born in Trenton, Jana called Kingston home beginning in 1979, and it was here that the spark was struck that ignited the hockey career of Kingston's most decorated Olympic athlete. Jana played hockey for the Kingston Kodiaks while she attended Holy Cross and then the University of Toronto, where she garnered Rookie of the Year and Top Score in 1996/97. She played on Canada's first Olympic women's hockey team, and in total won four Olympic gold medals and a silver, including scoring the winning goal, if you remember, in the 2002 final in Salt Lake City. Jana was a member of the Canadian Women's National Hockey Team for 18 seasons, amassing 157 goals and 291 points, a point total, second only to teammate Haley Wickenheiser. In two different world championship tournaments, she was the top scorer, and Jana was a player in the Canadian Women's Hockey League as well, before serving as Commissioner in 2018. For the past 20 years, Jana Hefford has returned to Kingston each July to give back to the game she loves and inspire future hockey players at her summer hockey camp for girls. In 1998, she was named Kingston's Amateur Athlete of the Year, was the top forward at the national championships in 2003, 6 and 8, and was the top forward at the Women's World Hockey Championships in 2004, 5 and 6. Jana has been a CWHL MVP, an All-Star and top forward in that league. In 2016, the CWHL established the Jana Hefford Trophy to honour their most outstanding athlete. A member of the Brampton Sports Hall of Fame, Jana has also been inducted into the Hockey Hall of Fame, and last year she was honoured with the Order of Canada and inducted into Canada's Sports Hall of Fame. Jana Hefford. Tim Irwin. A builder in sailing. Born in Los Angeles, California, and educated in British Columbia, Tim Irwin learned a love of sailing in BC. So when he arrived in Kingston in 1965, he quickly took up sailing on the waters around his new home. Tim joined the Kingston Yacht Club in 1967, and in 1968 represented Canada at the Mexico Olympics racing in the dragon class. A fixture with Cork, he has served as a volunteer, the results chair, a chair of the cork board, and is the operations event chair from 2010 to the present. When Montreal was awarded the 1976 Olympics, Tim was a part of the group that actively and successfully got the sailing venue secured for Kingston. Since its inception in 1969, Cork, the Canadian Olympic Sailing Ograda, has hosted up to 1,500 sailors on five different racecourses on the waters off Kingston, and Tim has played a key role in that process each and every year. He was also instrumental in bringing the Youth Sailing World Championship to Kingston back in 2007. Tim is a past Commodore with the Kingston Yacht Club, and he has been recognised at both the provincial and national level for his volunteer work with the sailing community. Tim Irwin. And last but certainly not least, George Patterson, an athlete in hockey. With us tonight is grandson and granddaughter Joanne Cruz and Brian Johnson. Born in Pittsburgh Township in 1906, George Patterson was a proud resident of the Kingston area his entire life, and enjoyed a 20-year professional career in the National Hockey League and the American Hockey League. George played for the Kingston Combines in 1925/26 season, the only Kingston team to represent our city at the Memorial Cup, thanks to his triple overtime goal that secured their place in the tournament. Then in 1927, he found his way into the record books with the Toronto Maple Leafs, scoring the first goal in the history of that storied franchise. He went on to play for the New York Americans, Boston Bruins, Detroit Red Wings, St Louis, and then with Cleveland and Hershey in the American Hockey Association, the precursor to the American Hockey League. He was their MVP in 1937/38 with the Minnesota Millers, the season in which he also won the scoring title. In his 20-year professional hockey career, George always played at a highly competitive level, averaging a point per game over his AHL career, and even at the end of his hockey career in the last two pro seasons with Hershey, he had 105 points in 102 games played. When George came home to Kingston in 1945, he coached the Queen's University seniors and the Eastern Ontario Senior B Kingston Nylons to a provincial championship in 1950/51. For many years, using the resources of his concrete business, George was a staunch supporter of minor hockey and never passed up the chance to help young players. On George's passing in 1977, Mike Rodden from the Kingston Whig Standard wrote, "As an individual, he acquitted himself with distinction and accepted fate in full stride. He never took a backward step, did not seek trouble and earned the respect of referees and opponents." George Patterson. Well, Mayor, there you have it. Members of council, our newest members of the Kingston and District Sports Hall of Fame. Once again, we thank you for this forum, for the first public unveiling of the latest group of the inductees, and we now ask our new Hall of Famers, family members and friends and board members as well, to head to Memorial Hall for some coffee and conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr Jeffries, and again, congratulations to all the inductees. We'll just wait for a moment while everybody that is heading to Memorial Hall has a chance Okay, so we have a second presentation this evening. Anne Coleman from the Ontario Living Wage Network will present Mayor Patterson with a certificate to acknowledge that the City of Kingston is now a living wage employer. Ms Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and members of council. The living wage is really about addressing poverty through paid work. We know that more and more people in our province are having to make tough decisions about putting food on the table, buying a transit pass to get to work or paying rent. When an employer makes a commitment to pay a living wage, their employees are able to cover their basic expenses and they're able to participate in community. Any additional income that an employee may begin to earn really goes back into the local economy and supports local businesses. So, I'm very, very pleased to say that this evening, the City of Kingston will become the 18th living wage employer here in Kingston, and the fourth municipality in Ontario, and will join the over 290 certified living wage employers in our province. So, thank you so much to everyone who helped make this possible, and a huge congratulations to the City of Kingston, and I'd like to present Mayor Patterson with this certificate.
Okay, so moving on, we have no further presentations, delegations, councillor McLaren.
Thank you, Your Worship, I have three. First one, that bylaw 2010-1 clause 11.4 be waived to add delegation Dr Bradley Diack, Professor of Mechanical and Material Engineering at Queen's University, Professional Engineer of Ontario, to speak to new motion number one with respect to not paving the trail between Queen Mary Road and the Parkway.
Councillor McLaren, can you just restate the doctor's last name?
Dr Bradley Diack.
Okay, is there a second or?
Councillor Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you, seconded by councillor Hutchinson. Okay, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. The second one is also to waive the bylaw 2010-1 clause 11.4, so as to add Dr David McDonald, Professor of Global Development Studies at Queen's University, to speak to report number 13, 1B, with respect to the recommendation to align the city's recycling programme with Ontario's regulations for full producer responsibility.
Is that also seconded by councillor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote, please. That carries. Councillor McLaren.
Okay, and the third one, also seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaw 2010-1 clause 11.4 be waived to add a delegation of Greg Lightfoot to speak to report number 13 clause 2 on the audit and accountability fund.
And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Going once, going twice. Okay, so we have three delegations on agenda, so first, I invite Dr Bradley Diack to speak to council with respect to new motion number one concerning the pathway, if you can find it here, the multi-use pathway between Parkway and Queen Mary Road. Dr Diack. Just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Right, thank you, Mayor Patterson, city council, city staff and guests. All right, so my name is Brad Diack, and what was said was that I'm also a husband, a parent, an active cyclist in the neighbourhood and a very, very happy citizen of Kingston. Right? Kingston's a wonderful city to live in. So, let me get to business. So, what I want to do is talk about a region of the city that maybe some of you aren't so familiar with, and this is a part of the Riddo Trail that runs between Princess and Bath Road, parallel to Portsmouth along the little Kataraku Creek marshland. So I've overlaid on this part of the map, part of the Kataraku Creek Regional Authority wetlands that have been set aside by some visionaries from the 1960s, and along it you can see a red pathway that corresponds to the Riddo Trail, which you're all very familiar with because it's been developed as part of the KP Trail on active transportation. So basically here. So what I want to emphasise is this little squared area here that we're zoomed into, so basically along the marshlands, there is this trail that's sitting here that's been basically that way since the late 1950s, early 60s, when this division of homes was built and basically encroached on the wetlands. And so it's been like that for decades in that sense. What's interesting about it is that it has remained unchanged, but it's been used by a considerable number of people in the city at that time. So, this is sort of what it looks like in the summer, it's a beaten path, we have a lot of these in the cities that are sort of going towards development, and what's important to realise is that it is used by cyclists right now, it's used by runners, walkers, people with strollers, but it's still not the most accessible trail in the city. It actually lacks accessibility, right? And that's a very important issue, which is why it should be developed, and developed in a fair way that reflects the environment. So what I want to indicate is the city has taken efforts through the active transportation plan to map out this network of cycling routes, which you're very familiar with, since this is very recent since September, I think of this year, and you can see that the route that I'm interested in is squared off here, which is Route 8, and this is the part that's going to connect this part of Queen Mary to Parkway up on the top. And if you, and if I can ask, you can see that, has anyone in this room actually walked or ridden on this trail? Can you raise your hands? All right, so we can see that there are some experts or people that have experienced that part of the city, and it is a wonderful part of the city that if you go there and you walk off the road, you can see that you are no longer in an urban environment, right? So it's something that's pretty special, and it's something that, again, that these people 60 years ago, when they thought about this, tried to maintain these sort of areas, all right? And it's also very sensitive to wildlife. So what I've done is I've put a little movie here that's going to play a few times, and so this is not the nicest time of year, so this is looking from Parkway South along the trail, and that's the gateway now, and you can see that it's not accessible to get to the trail very easily, and you can see that as you meander through this video a couple of times, it's a very uneven surface, it's curved, it's very, it's more rugged than you would think, right? So we'll run it once and run it twice, and then the other picture on your right, that's looking at it from the Queen Mary End, right? Which is basically a cul-de-sac, and that's sort of what the entrance fit looks like, and there's a burr there, and we'll run through it a couple of times. Okay, so if you haven't been there and you wander in there, it also connects to some trails that are accessible. So, the city has proposed, and rightfully so, to make this part of their active transportation route, because it does connect some neighbourhoods, but I want to tell you that it is used, and is used now by a large number of people in the neighbours, and what I want to indicate is also home to some sensitive environment, right? It is, it's the wetlands, and the wetlands are what they are. So what the city is proposing is that, we've been told, is that it wants to pave an asphalt trail through here, develop it, which it needs development, but that trailway is sort of not taking into account the sensitivity of the environment, and we think there are alternatives to it. So this is, the first picture on your right is an example of part of the trail that is being paved north of Princess Street. A few years ago, I mean, I can't remember exactly how long it was, and you can see that it's already undergoing degradation due to thermal cracking as we go, and that's sort of a close-up of it. And we know that in Kingston it's very difficult to maintain infrastructure like this because of the climate that we're in, and so we must consider that maybe that's not the best alternative for that. And I have a quote here from Mark Dixon, who's been very helpful in communication, saying that, you know, if we do an asphalt pathway, it will cost more versus stone dust as an alternative, maintenance is different. Yeah, so let me get to the end. There is a forward way, and that is the city's also very good at constructing what we call stone pathways, that more are fitting with the environment, and what I'm saying is that we want this trail developed, and we means the signatories that I've gone after to get the petition, there's more than 700 of us, but we want to do it in a sustainable way that reduces environmental issues.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions from council? Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering if you have any information on runoff of the gravel into the waterways that are there and sensitive? Do you have details about that?
So I never said gravel, and I think the discussion about surface, what the surface should be is, I'm not an expert on that, that should be a discussion that involves city staff. But I would say that currently it's a wetland, so with a wetland, water is absorbed into the area, and it is actually very wet in the spring, very wet when it rains, and then it sort of releases it. So it's breathing, it's part of it, we've already encroached in that area. So they want to put up, you know, with an asphalt surface, what do you get? You get runoff, there's no more absorption into the environment. And I think you can engineer your way out of that, but nonetheless, it's not as absorbable as a stone path path. A stone path path fits the environmental sort of feeling of that area when you enter it, and it still will give you accessibility, which is what we really also want. Okay, so as for gravel runoff into the area, depends on the type, we're not talking about gravel, it could be fine dust or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Neil.
Yes, and I'll probably ask this question of staff as well, but I've always, it's been my understanding that on questions of accessibility, whether it's wheelchair accessible or year-round accessible, a hard surface would be preferable, because I'm not sure plowing a gravelled surface is a good idea, but it would be if it was concrete, so we could have year-round use. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. So I think that's an important issue, so maintaining roads are obviously much easier if you have asphalt, right? Surface with paving, but you can maintain gravel roads, and again, we're not proposing this be gravel, we're proposing something that's a harder surface with rock dust that's going to be capable of plowing, if plowing is a necessity. I'm going to remind you that this pathway is 857 metres long, right? So if you take 857 metres and times the area or the width of it, that's equivalent to basically approximately 369 parking spaces at law blocks, right? So that's paved, okay? So.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Right, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we'll now move to our second delegation of the evening, invite Dr David McDonald to come forward, who will speak to council with respect to item 1B from report number 13 from the CAO with respect to recommendations to align the city's recycling programme with Ontario regulations for full producer responsibility.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my name's David McDonald, I teach at Queen's
I teach at Queen's University. I also run a research project called the Municipal Services Project, which has been running for the last 20 years, which looks at service provision around the world. We've done work in over 50 different countries on a wide range of services, including waste management and other waste stream activities. And I want to speak to this proposal tonight on the recycling. And basically, as a follow-up to the email that I sent around to each of the councillors and the mayor, to propose that it be postponed for further study. And I'll just very quickly highlight my three points and rationales for that. The first is that I think it's just premature from a legislative point of view. The producer pays legislation at the provincial level is still undetermined. I suspect that the provincial government is still figuring out its own path forward on this. It doesn't really have a coherent kind of environmental strategy at this point. It's taken on this Liberal policy and is also at odds with other Liberal policies, so I think it's really very much in flux. And we just don't know what this policy is going to look like. And it really does seem premature to sort of abandon our capacity to do in-house recycling when we just simply don't know what this legislation is going to look like. There's also divisions within the private sector about how they're going to manage this producer pay system, and I think a growing resistance to what is seen as a kind of de facto privatisation of our recycling system in this province, and big concerns around where this policy is headed. So I think we have a long way to go in terms of what this legislation is going to look like, and it seems far premature to sort of throw our hat out of the ring at this time. Second is a cost-related question. If it turns out that we have sold off our equipment and we have abandoned our managerial capacity and staff capacity, rebuilding that could be very, very expensive. And we just simply don't know what the kind of worst-case scenario might look like. And at the very least, I think we have to have a better handle on what the fiscal implications of it could be, should we have to bring these services back in-house, having sold off our equipment and moved staff around, et cetera. Thirdly, and perhaps most importantly, is the loss of a kind of democratic control of our waste management system. We want to be one of Canada's most sustainable cities. Waste management is a very important part of that, and taking waste out of our landfills and being more responsible with our recycling is a really important part of that. Without the internal capacity to manage that on the ground with our work staff and at the managerial and at the policy level, have we simply abandoned the kind of democratic control of what is a really important part of our environmental management for this city? Now, I say this, and I preface my comments with the research that I do internationally, because this is, in fact, the exact opposite of what's going on in many other parts of the world. I've just returned from a conference in Amsterdam with representatives from around the world, and the trend is actually the reverse, to re-municipalise. This is a word that only academics could come up with, but it basically means bringing services back in-house after a period of privatisation. We've documented now over 2,000 municipalities that have re-municipalised, brought services back in-house, ranging from water to electricity to waste management, healthcare services, et cetera. And the list is growing. And this is particularly strong in Europe, with 30 years of experiences of outsourcing. They are basically realising it is more expensive to do it with outsourcing. Private companies need to take a profit. It's expensive to manage the contracts, expensive lawyers, et cetera, if the company fails recouping and rebuilding the services. The academic literature is unanimous in basically saying there is no proven cost savings associated with privatisation. You can find cases where it has done better than the public service, but generally speaking, it's now widely accepted that it generally is cheaper to do services in-house. So it seems a shame to abandon what is a very effective service in this city, although partly outsourced already, at a time when we don't know what the legislative change is going to look like, and in fact, there is no evidence internationally of any cost savings.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. So my recommendation is that we take a breath, send it to committee, have some community input, and think very carefully about whether we want to effectively abandon our capacity to recycle at a very important moment in terms of climate change and environmental issues, or whether we want to think about retaining democratic control of this important resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the delegation? So I appreciate the enthusiasm. Unfortunately, one of my roles is to be the enforcer of procedural rules, which ask for people to refrain from applause, please. But that being said, thank you for the delegation. Thank you for the response. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Neal?
Just very quickly, I'm curious, because council didn't receive this report in any kind of detail, I believe, until Thursday or Friday. So we've only had a couple of days. When did you become aware of this, and when were you able to read this?
Like you, very, very last minute, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay. So we'll move to our third and final delegation this evening. We'll invite Mr. Greg Lightfoot, who will speak to council with respect to clause number two, report from report number 13 from the CAO with respect to the Audit and Accountability Fund.
First off, thank you to Counselor Hutchison for helping me today to get on the docket. I really appreciate it. I don't plan on taking up too much of your time. I want to speak to, on Friday, January 3rd, I picked up the Kingston WIG standard, and on the front page, there was an article that says, "Report Finds Potential Savings in City Hall's Administration." And it's with reference to the Conduct and Accountability Fund. And it looks as though KPMG produced a report and did an assessment of basically city administration. And I just felt it incumbent upon me to come to council tonight to say something. And I work, and regardless of where I work, whether it be in private commerce, healthcare, or government, I understand the modern pressures that come with work today. And this article, which is not the report itself, but this article starts off with, "Depending on its appetite for downsizing staff levels, the city could save between 2% and 5% in programming costs." So right off the bat, when I read it, downsizing, staffing, things that we've heard before and things that I don't like to hear. And so I think the presentation of the report through the newspaper, the way that it was presented, before a council meeting on the matter was held, adds inappropriate pressure to city employees, and I don't think it's fair. And I just felt that somebody should say that, and that's why I came here tonight, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Strachan?
Thank you for your presentation. So I assume you've had a chance to look over the details of the report itself, and did you find any editorialising in the article or things that were portrayed in the article that were different from what was in the report?
So I didn't find — I have not read the report itself, and I will not say that I did. But from the actual — from what was written in the paper, which is apparently from the report, which is presented to the public, there were a few things in here where there were actually citations of a few statements that really kind of rung with me to kind of motivate me to come in to say something. And so with respect to the report itself, to be honest with you, I'm not overly focused on what the report is itself at this point in time. What bothers me is the fact that people are going to work, and on the front page of an article, the last thing that — on the front page of the newspaper, I think the last thing that a lot of people want to hear today is downsizing and staffing and reductions when it comes to city — to the city and city employees and to programmes. Because I'm 41 years old, and I grew up in Kingston, and I remember the city when I was a kid, and the city is much better off today than it was when I was younger. The services are very good, and any city employee I've dealt with, for the most part, has done an exceptional job. And I just felt it necessary, because most people read the WIG standard. Sure, they probably, to be honest with you, I don't think many people have read the report. And I trust that you have, and I trust that you will do everything diligently when it comes to handling the report. But most people probably read the article and then form an opinion on it and then go about their day. And from reading the article and whoever decided that they were going to speak to the WIG standard and have it released the way that it was, I don't think it's fair to employees. I don't think it's fair to people that go to work every day to have to worry now, and city workers who read this article are probably worried, that they might lose their job. And I don't think this is the time for people to have to worry about that more than most people already do.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah. So it sounds like, maybe you could expand on this, you're guessing that city staff that wrote the report were in contact with the newspaper, with the writing of the article, and that had some influence on the way the article was worded that is separate but consistent with a certain attitude to downsizing and cost savings that you think is coming from city staff and not from the reporter?
To be honest with you, when I read the article, I had the feeling in the sense that somebody released this through the newspaper to kind of send a message to city employees. And I didn't think that was appropriate. And that's just from reading the article. And like I'd said, most people probably haven't read the report itself, but from the article and from what I read, it seemed as though this was kind of like a warning in a way. And I wanted to make sure that someone at least came and said something — said something about that.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council? Thank you very much. Okay. So we have no other delegations this evening, so we will move on in our agenda. We do have one briefing this evening. We invite Desiree Kennedy, Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer, to provide introductory remarks and introduce Oscar Poloney, Office Managing Partner, KPMG, who brief counsel on clause 2, report number 13 from the CAO with respect to the Audit and Accountability Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will be brief. I'm just going to take this opportunity to introduce the briefing and the folks that we have here tonight from KPMG with respect to report number 20-044, the Audit and Accountability Fund. Council, we recall early in spring of 2019 that the province did provide some opportunity for funding around a review of municipal expenditures, and there were various streams that we could apply through in order to find some efficiencies. And in June, we brought a report to council. Council approved us to put an expression of interest into the province with respect to reviewing administrative processes themselves. We were successful in receiving funding of $175,000 from the province to do this, and we hired KPMG to come in and help us with this review. It was required that it be a third-party independent review as part of the eligibility for the funding. We selected four service areas: housing, social services, childcare, and long-term care. And the reason that we selected these twofold, one, because of the provincial legislative nature and the funding nature of these, so all four of these services have a significant proportion of provincial funding, and with that comes reporting requirements and other legislative requirements that were required to follow. And then, second to, staff had already recognised, because of a lot of the legislative requirements in these services, that there was some low-hanging efficiencies that perhaps we could find working with the province. So we felt that these were areas that certainly we could find some areas in terms of efficiencies in the administrative and cost reduction. So KPMG has been working with staff in each of these areas over the last few months and have now presented their report, which is attached to the council report tonight. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Oscar Poloney. Oscar is a partner with KPMG out of the Sudbury office, so he spent some time flying back and forth between Sudbury and Kingston the last few months for us, and certainly is an expert in doing these types of service reviews and process reviews. As well as Laurie Huber is here, and some of you may recognise Laurie. She is our audit partner on the annual audit from KPMG here in Kingston, and Laurie has also been working with Oscar to — with our staff to present this report tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Oscar.
Your worship, members of council. Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to be here today. The purpose of our presentation is to provide counsel with an overview of the results of our review of the city's services that were subject to the scope. So what I'd like to do tonight is provide a very high-level summary of the report and what we've commented on. I'd like to talk a little bit about the review and what we've done, focus on some of the key findings, talk about potential courses of action that the city can consider as you move forward, as well as the benefits and next steps. So as mentioned, the review was conducted under the province's Audit and Accountability Fund and basically looked to identify potential cost savings and efficiencies through changes to your existing processes. I would like to reiterate to council that the concept of service-level reductions was not on the table, was not included in the scope of our review, and was not addressed by KPMG. As mentioned by your treasurer, the scope of the review really involved what we consider to be human services. These are services that are providing assistance in a variety of means to vulnerable segments of the community, and included your Ontario Works, children's services, housing and homelessness, and your long-term care home specifically. I would like to caution council that our focus and our engagement was specifically on your processes and potential improvements to your processes. The concept of customer need, the concept of public policy initiatives, while they are valid, was not something that we were asked to comment on. And so because of that, our comments really are restricted to process improvements. What we've done is we've worked with your teams, and we've conducted working sessions with them that covered just under 100 processes. And this involved everything from how you pay rent supplements to how you have intake with respect to child fee subsidy. And the results of our analysis were summarised in process maps, and we were really looking for four potential areas for enhancements. How can I address process inefficiencies? So how can I streamline our processes? How can I avoid duplication? How can I make use of technology? How can we look to address client service limitations? So to the extent that you have processes that, while they may work, place a burden on your ultimate customer, the question is, is how can you improve that effectiveness? Can you look at areas of financial risk, where you're potentially exposed to loss or increased cost? And lastly, are there areas of litigation risk? And these are aspects of your processes that may actually expose you to litigation, may expose you to reputational risk as well. When we do reviews like this, our focus is predominantly to look at areas of improvement. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, as a result of our review, we found a number of things that you actually do well. And we're not necessarily surprised, so what we did want to do is to highlight them. And what you'll find in the report and is summarised on this slide is there's a number of areas where you're actually exemplars, where you do good jobs. And so it's not necessarily a bad news story, recognising that our real role wasn't necessarily to point out all the good things that you've done, but rather to look at the areas of improvement. What you will find, and as mentioned by Ms. Kennedy, there's a very heavy degree of provincial regulation and requirements associated with how you deliver these services. And what you will find is those requirements will actually create inefficiencies on their own. The requirement for hard copy as opposed to digitisation, the requirement for you to report in ways that your system, you need to manipulate. So one of the things, counsel, that we think is important to recognise is, while you have inefficiencies in your system, the reality is, is in some cases, these are not caused by you, and in some cases, you can't actually address them until the provinces change the environment that you operate within. What you will find, however, is there's nothing so perfect. It cannot be improved. And so by going through the processes, what we found were almost 200 areas where you could look to change your processes, to enhance the efficiencies, to cover your potential risks, to streamline the processes. risks, to streamline the process, and enhance your customer experience. And there's a number of areas that will create these inefficiencies. Some of them relate to technology, some of them relate to duplication of effort, some of them deal with errors, and the old adage about an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Some of them have to deal with how you approve transactions and how you actually undertake your activities to maximize your funding. I do want to tell council this. I have worked with probably 100 municipalities across three provinces. This is not the first time I have seen what I have seen in Kingston. The delivery of human services is very complex, it's very rigid, it's very structured, and in a number of cases, particularly with respect to Ontario Works, it has undergone significant change in the past year. What we have seen here, we have seen elsewhere. And so what I would suggest to you is, this is not necessarily a reflection on Kingston per se. What this is, is this is a reflection on the system and the complexity that you operate in. Clearly, there are some nuances here, because not every municipality is the same, but the reality is, is I can go to other municipalities, and I'm quite confident to say I will find the same things that I have found here. So, as I've mentioned, there's 200 or so potential changes that we've identified from a process mapping perspective. Some of these are very low-hanging fruit, other of these are more substantive in nature that have big benefits, but frankly, will require a bit more investment to make. In the report, we've identified four priority areas that we would suggest the city focus on. The first one deals with looking at the effectiveness of your administrative processes. And what you'll note from the slide, and what you'll note from the report, is it says to continue your process, because these are things that your staff have already identified, these are things that your staff have already started to work towards, and what we would suggest to you is, these are valid. If your staff haven't picked them up, we would suggest you pick them up anyways, so continue what you're doing now. The other priorities relate to both housing and social services in Rito Crest, because there are two administrative departments involved, that look at reducing errors, look at reducing duplication, and looking at how you document and how you potentially use digitization. There was reference made to the financial savings and the potential benefits from this. We've done an analysis of savings that have occurred out of other reviews, and what you basically suggest to you is you can save somewhere between 2% to 5% of administrative time associated with this process. I want to caution council, this is not 2% to 5% of the budgets. Because what you will find inside Ontario Works, your largest component is transfer payment, the numbers there are the numbers there. So if you're going to say, we spend X millions of dollars in health and social services, and we could reduce it by 5%, the math doesn't work. What we would also suggest is that, if you're going to get these gains, they're going to come in one of two categories. Either you're going to free up capacity to be able to redirect those efforts elsewhere, or you're going to realize a financial savings. And what's important to recognize, council, and the best way I can give the example is this, there are 13 people sitting around this table. If I take half an hour out of your days through process efficiencies, that will give me basically one day worth of time. That doesn't let me reduce, council, by one. So these are process efficiencies that are spread across multiple departments, multiple people, and so because of that, in order to realize them, you actually have to find the consolidation that allows you to say, okay, we've eliminated not the equivalent of one position, but we can tweak things so that where we have attrition, we don't necessarily need to fill. So we have had discussions with your staff. The suggested course of action is that your staff go back, look at the recommendation, and develop their own implementation plans that talk about where are you going to focus, what's the low-hanging fruit, where are the big bangs, what are your resources and your timeframes? So, your worship and members of council, that concludes our presentation. I do want to end with one comment in the 38 seconds that I have left. Processes like this can be exceptionally difficult for staff. When people show up and say, tell me what you do, tell me why you do it, and tell me how you do it. And the reality is, is there was trepidation in the system, and we sensed it during our sessions, particularly the ones that we had. Despite this, we received great cooperation, there was great input from your staff, and there was a high degree of professionalism. Things clearly can change, things clearly can get better, but I will say two things. One is, you do a lot of things right, and second of all, council, you have some very good people that work for you. And I can appreciate the delegation, I was going to say this anyways. What I do want to say is, I would be very remiss if I didn't thank the staff who took the opportunity to cooperate with us and provide input, because at the end of the day, ultimately, the success of this depends on the contribution of your people. So, your worship, members of council, that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions, we're more than happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Strub.
I'm curious about two aspects of the report, and maybe you could comment on them. The first one is the digitization. And using, for the purposes of having an efficient conversation today, I'm just going to use Rito Crest as an example. So that's a healthcare facility. I work in one, I work at KGH as a registered nurse, I've never worked at Rito Crest, but what KGH has is a paper-based system of charting, and I'm wondering if the digitization that you're talking about would include considering digitization of the charting from the nursing staff at Rito Crest?
Through you, your worship, at Rito Crest right now, you actually have a digitized system called point-click care. What you're finding is, is because of technology limitations, what you're actually doing is you have paperwork arounds. And so what you have is, you have ostensibly an environment where you're supposed to be operating in a digitized environment, where you're not, because the system, the interface, the access doesn't work. And so that's one example that we could cite, that we've identified through the report. In another example, for example, every time you pay a rent supplement, there's manual documentation that's going back and forth to get a check out the door. And our question was, if you know the amount, and you know it gets paid monthly, and you know it gets paid at the same time, why don't you digitize the process by having an EFT transfer once a month, much like how I pay my cable bill? So these are some of the examples that we've identified. There is the potential inside Rito Crest, and your staff are already working towards addressing those issues. In some cases, you're using paper because you've always used paper, in some cases, you're using paper because the province requires you to. And in some cases, you're using paper because you haven't fully utilized technology. So there's all sorts of factors that lead to it. There's opportunity in Rito Crest, there's opportunities in housing, there's opportunities in Ontario Works.
So, to sum up what you're saying, continue to digitize at Rito Crest and other systems that we've already begun. We're not essentially using the full benefit of the digitalization that's at our disposal. So my second question is kind of related, it's about the automation. So you mentioned automated rent collection, for example, with those transfer payments. Is there anything in what you found where the inefficiency would be addressed by replacing any jobs by automation, or even partially by automation?
Through you, your worship, we were not identifying any situations where you would use optical character recognition, for example, to replace data entry. And part of the reason for that, counselor, if you will, and to be frank, you're not processing accounts payable invoices where there's standard data fields and there's standard processes that you're looking for. So for example, in Ontario Works, there's records of income that are provided on a monthly basis by some of the caseload. The formats are such that there's a lot of significant deviation towards them, so we wouldn't have recognized an OCR, for example. At the end of the day, you do have people that are involved in moving documents back and forth, to the extent that you have digitization, that workload goes away. I want to caution you, though, you don't have a full-time person whose job is to move files back and forth. Your staff have other aspects of their responsibility, and that's the example that I use where, to be frank, I can't take a counselor out of the system because it's not seven hours a day, 52 weeks a year.
Okay. Next on my list was Counsel Neil.
Thank you. This first question may be for our CFO, I'm not sure. When did we have the, I'm assuming this was an RFP process, and I'm wondering when the RFP was let? I'm just trying to get a timeline around this.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we did not do an RFP. When the provincial funding was announced, there were some very, very short timelines in terms of when a report had to be done and posted and available to the public. So when we came to council to make sure there was an interest for us to move forward and apply for this funding, we also requested approval to do a sole source to KPMG. We did do some research in the market prior to that to see who had some experience, particularly in these service areas, and knew that KPMG did have that. KPMG also had some of the experience being our auditors as well, and so council approved us to do a sole source so that we could move forward with the work quite quickly.
Thank you. I'm just curious, perhaps you could answer this, or perhaps, Ms. Kennedy. When did the report come to the city? I know there was a December 31 deadline for us to pass it on to the province, but I'm just curious when the city actually received the report.
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the report was made available to the public as part of the council report, so January 7th, so it would have been posted sometime last Wednesday, Thursday, it would have been posted and made available. We would have had a draft, we've worked through actually two or three drafts prior to that, so we actually approved the final draft just before that over the Christmas holidays.
But it's my understanding that it was submitted to the province by December 31st. Is that accurate?
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes, the original agreement was by December 31st. We did have a conversation with the ministry over the holidays, and they agreed that as long as we had it posted by the timeline for the January 7th meeting publicly, that we'd be okay. We did actually provide it to the ministry in a draft form, subject to it coming to council by December 31st.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on my list is Counsel Chappell.
Yes, thank you, through you, worship. I'm grateful that the province made the $175,000 available, and I'm assuming we spent all of that with this proposal. However, my question really relates to, having done this work, which is taxing at the best of times, is there now a realized savings of at least $175,000 on an annualized basis going forward?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start, and Mr. Poloney might want to add to that. I would say at this point, we can't answer that question. We have the list of recommendations now from KPMG and from the staff review. The next steps will be to prioritize those recommendations, to look at what the next steps are. There are a number of recommendations, as Mr. Poloney said in the recommendation, that are in his presentation, that we've already started working on. So some of our priorities will be to finish up on some of those, and then we'll be prioritizing some of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, and some of those things that we can do quickly. And then we'll be looking at, staff will have a plan in terms of what do we build into the work plan over the next year. So we'll certainly know more as we start to implement some of the recommendations.
Is it fair to make an assumption that you'll be reporting back to council on the realized savings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think we can do that. I would say this is part of our just normal day-to-day operations in terms of how we manage the administration and the processes, but certainly, we could provide some sort of a summary back to council at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Ossanik. Oh, I'm sorry, CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through, Mr. Mayor, if I can just add to that, we will be reporting back on the saving, which could include also capacity in terms of staff time. It doesn't mean that it will necessarily translate into dollars in all or every situation, so I just want to be clear on that.
Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, a question to KPMG. For the 200 process improvement recommendations in the report, what sort of timeframe do you think is reasonable if the city was to implement the majority of them? Are we looking more within the next five years, or are the recommendations you think attainable in the next two years? What sort of timeframe?
Through you, your worship, the recommendations will vary. There are some that have immediately short timeframes, where you could look to change your processes within a matter of months. There are some that may require you to invest in technology, so there's business case development that has to happen. So the reality, counselor, is I do not anticipate this as a five-year process by any stretch of the imagination. I'm cautious about timeframes, because to put it out there, what it implies is that you're taking all of the recommendations all at once, and then that comes down to a question of capacity. I would suggest there are some recommendations that you could implement within a couple of months. I would suggest there's some recommendations that may take you up to 18 months to two years to implement, some of the more substantive ones, if you will.
Thank you.
Counsel Hill.
Thank you, your worship. In your summary, you indicated that there's potential savings of between $225,000 to Did you delineate sort of what share of that would, I guess, require us to rely on provincial regulation changes?
Through you, your worship.
I'm sorry, just, how did you arrive at that number, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Through you, your worship, there's a couple of steps that we undertook to do this. In one respect, what we did was, and it's in the report, we went through and we identified specific implementations and tried to quantify the estimated time savings that you would have in hours. And there is a page towards the end of the report that lays out four or five examples. And so what you will find, then, is that we've used to say, if we take that and apply that across the 200, recognizing some of the savings are five hours, some of the savings may be upwards of 300 to 400 hours, what do we believe the quantum is? And then we use that to gut-check a series of analysis that we've done with respect to other reports, to look at other municipalities and other public sector organizations, to say, where they have undertaken continuous improvement, where they have undertaken lean transformations, what have their savings been? And what you will find is that, when you do that type of analysis across the six reports, seven reports that we looked at, you actually get a range. And in one case, for example, the report quantified the savings as saying, in 30%, they save 2% or less, in 40%, they save between 2% to 5%, and in whatever percent, they saved in excess of 5% to 7%. And so what we did was, we used a combination of what we could see from some of the implementation efforts, and what we've seen in other organizations, to arrive at a range broadly of 2% to 5%. So once again, it was a bit specific to Kingston, it was a bit relying on the expectations of other organizations as well. Ultimately, counsel, if I may, my comment, generally speaking, is to say that no plan survives contact. So what you will find is this, you will have a process that you believe works, you'll have a process that you can identify these changes, and part of the implementation approach is to say, develop a hypothesis for how you would change this, implement the change, monitor the results, and see if you can actually achieve the savings that you're hoping for. If you can't, then you go back and form a different hypothesis. What this all is contingent on is that the province doesn't change the rules, is that technology doesn't change, and it's that you don't find something that occurs where you say, oh, we did not realize this, and so because of that, there's a potential for the savings to either be greater or less. And so when we express communications with respect to these types of improvements, we always provide them in a range. These, though, are yours. These aren't, if the province changed X, this is how much you would save. So there are potential savings there, and in some cases, particularly with respect to Rito Crest, there's the opportunity for higher revenue. Because if you change your processes, you have the potential to increase what the province calls your casemix index or your CMI, which actually gets you more grant. And that is changing a process to generate more revenues. So we're cautious with how we've expressed the range. At the end of the day, it's based on what we've known and what we've seen from the experience elsewhere. So, counselor, I hope that answers your question.
We're on the way. If you look at page 32, you've got some of those examples that you mentioned, there's four of them, and you've listed some hours there. So now you indicated that there were roughly 200 recommendations, are those going to be public, part of the public document at some point? The 200 recommendations?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, no, it's not planned that that would be part of any public document. I think that's a staff document in terms of then helping with the implementation plan and where we're going to go with some of those.
Okay. So the hours that you've listed here in these examples, there's 200... there's 200, there's 620 hours, basically. Are these, do these four examples encapsulate the 200 recommendations? Or is this a more limited example?
Through you, your worship. These are four out of the 200.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. Through you. You may have answered this in a different way. But in the pursuance of the 2% to 5% savings in administration, is it reasonable to expect that we will have to make capital and training investments in order to realize them?
Through you, your worship. In certain instances, certain initiatives will require capital investment specifically around technology. So there will be one-time costs associated with realizing the savings.
Wouldn't that also affect training? These people are changing the processes by which they do things?
Through you, your worship. That is correct, counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Crowley.
Thank you, and through you. Picking up on the comment just made about the savings in administration, is it expected that if there are other departments that had a similar mix of administration to service delivery, however that ratio would be calculated, that the same percentage of 2% to 5% could be found? I know that's a bit beyond the scope, but generally speaking, from this type of review, would a similar ratio be found elsewhere?
Through you, your worship. We would suggest that the level of savings will be contingent on the service that's involved. So something that is particularly administrative process, so thinking corporate services, procurement, accounts payable, accounts receivable payroll, would likely generate higher savings than processes such as public works, work order management. The other comment that I will make is you do not deliver services the way you choose to. In a lot of respects, you deliver services the way the province tells you to. And I'll give you the best example and the one that I cite. Under the rules for long-term care homes, every resident in a long-term care home is entitled to either a bath or shower twice a week in the form of their choosing. And that is the best example that I can think of of how prescriptive the province gets when they are delivering human services. And so because of that, and it's not necessarily administrative process, but in terms of the reporting, in terms of the transaction processing, in terms of the documentation, you actually have very little latitude compared to how you cut an accounts payable check or how you deploy your winter resources. And so because of that, the percentage may seem low, but the reality, counsel, is this. Is this is an area where you really don't have a lot of discretion in terms of what you do. Different departments may have different opportunities, and it's not within our scope. What I would, what I would suggest is some of the benefits that we've identified for your human services will actually spill into finance. Because I mentioned that prepping a requisition 12 times a year as opposed to one EFT. The other side of that is your accounts payable person who has to write 12 checks as opposed to one EFT. So you will see some spillover. This is a very nuanced, and this is a very specific service. And it's also probably one of the most regulated that you can get. And so it's not necessarily reflective of what you'll see elsewhere in a municipality.
Thank you.
Counselor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you. When looking for efficiencies, I just wonder if you could share what considerations were made for the people accessing the services?
Through you, your worship. Once again, we were not looking at the service level and the appropriateness of the service level. So for example, are you providing access in a timeframe and in formats that your clients want? That was outside of our scope. What we did look at, though, is from a process perspective, where your staff and your teams were interacting with the clients and asking the question, does this really give you the best in customer service? So for example, if you look at the services that you provide, sprinkled throughout them is the concept of income verification. I need to qualify for child fee subsidy. I need to qualify for Ontario Works benefits. Those are not provided under what we call a one-window format now. And so because of that, conceivably, I could come to the city, and I could income qualify for one service, and then I have to go through a second process. That is an inefficiency from a process perspective on your part because you're doing the same thing twice. But it's also a customer limitation. When you think about childcare services, there's a mandatory requirement for the province for people to meet with families that have child fee subsidy. There's also a mandatory requirement for you to update their income information based on notices of assessment. If you do those in two separate meetings, that's a process inefficiency. But what it also is, is it's an impact on the customer because what you're making me do is coming in twice as opposed to once. So that is the concept and the context with which we viewed customer service. Admittedly, some of the initiatives that we've identified are going to potentially enhance the customer experience. At the end of the day, though, the concept of how should I be able to access these services? What's the level of support that I could provide? That got into a service-level discussion that council, quite frankly, was not in the scope of our review.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship.
Okay, so we will move on in our agenda. We have no other briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. I rise now to present a petition from the citizens in my district and other residents as well against paving a trail in my district. This has been signed by 718 residents of the City of Kingston and as reads as follows. Twelve current, past, and future users of the Rito Trail that runs on the east side of Little Cataract Way Creek between Parkway and Queen Mary Road and everyone concerned about the environment. The City of Kingston is building a multi-use pathway connecting Parkway and Queen Mary Roads as part of Kingston's active transportation plan. The pathway will be built on a part of the Rito Trail that runs through a conservation area on the east side of the Little Cataract Way Creek wetlands. The wetlands are home to a diverse range of aquatic and nested and nesting species. The multi-use pathway will improve accessibility to the area, but is not being designed to minimize environmental impact. The City of Kingston plans to pave a petroleum-based asphalt road down this portion of the Rito Trail instead of using a more environmentally friendly surfacing option. The City of Kingston has no data on how we use this green space daily, yet is pushing forward with its pave-it-and-leave-it solution. We are requesting a compromise. Build an accessible pathway, not paved with asphalt, but surfaced with stone dust and elevated as long and evaluated as long-term use and impact on the wetland area to inform best practices for future development. We the undersigned.
Counselor McLaren?
Yes.
So generally speaking, we don't permit a reading of the entire petition? Just wondering, are you near, are you near the end?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We the undersigned ask Kingston City Council to recognize the following. Whereas a stone-dust surface is environmentally less intrusive and reduces unnecessary urbanization of existing conservation lands and adjustments to protected westlands rather than an asphalt surface. Whereas a stone-dust surface is perhaps more cost-effective to install and maintain than an asphalt surface. Whereas a stone-dust surface meets the needs of active transportation and accessibility on urban pathways, including current community stakeholders. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Kingston use stone dust instead of asphalt for the surface finishing of the proposed multi-use pathway between Parkway and Queen Mary Road until such time as user data for this pathway exists that would justify more asphalt.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other petitions to present? Okay. Okay, so we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so we will move to reports. First up, we have report number 12 from the CAO.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Oosterhoff, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, that report number 12 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are four clauses. Would anyone like the clauses separated? Counselor Chappell.
Through you, one and two.
Thank you. Seeing no other separations, we will first take the vote then on the clauses that have not been separated. So that would be clause 3, 2020 interim tax levy, and clause 4, proposed settlement of Ontario Heritage Act appeal 1216 Unity Road, the Glenn Burney Methodist Church. Please vote.
Waiting for one vote. So pardon me, everyone. We're going to have to retake the vote on that. So just bear with me one moment. We'll end it and retake it.
Okay, we will take, call the vote. Please vote now. And that carries. Okay, back to clause one. Renewal of the service-level agreements between the City of Kingston and the Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites. Counselor Chappell.
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. I was reading this report with great interest about funding for CAM in 2020. And the reason why I took great interest in it is the way the financial considerations are reported on page six. We're talking about an amount of $100,919, which is less than 10% of the KETCO budget. And in this particular example, 25% of this budget was paid out when council approves the SLA agreement. And then 65% paid out in the 22 agreement has been signed by both parties. And 10% to be paid out upon the recipient of the year-end report. Sounds to me like the full budget is being approved, but there are some additional, I guess, milestones that have been reached in order to fully comply. So I would just like to point that out, that this is something that seems to take place for smaller organizations and therefore be more than suitable for an organization like KETCO. And I'd like to ask Mr. Winnington if he can comment on the rationale behind the process for this budgetary allotment.
Mr. Wiggerton.
Through you, your worship. We have ongoing relationships with both the Kingston Arts Council and the Kingston Association of Museums. And each year, when we go through this process of negotiating an SLA, we also work through identifying payment schedules. And they are partly in place to ensure cash flow for these smaller organizations so they have money from the beginning of the fiscal year to cover their their needs, but also to then have the opportunity to withhold funds until such time as we can finalize the terms of an SLA and then ensure the compliance or the completion of the SLA by the end of the year, which is the reason for the 10% holdback as well.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think that's an excellent suggestion. And I would ask if Ms. Hurdle would like to comment.
C. O'Hurley.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So from a staff perspective, we can definitely apply a different structure for any of the organizations that we work with. And we would assume that we wouldn't just supply it to one, but to all of them, which we would have those relationships with. But we would definitely be looking for some council guidance before going down that road.
Okay, thank you. We will call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Clause two, 2020 municipal borrowing bylaw. Counselor Chappell.
Yes, thank you through you, your worship. I noticed here that we have the borrowing capacity, in theory, of $250 million for the period of January 1, 2020, September 30, 2022, or sorry, 2020, rather, and a period of $125 million of borrowing capacity if we were to borrow all of the money. And I would just like to ask staff if, in fact, we've ever come close to needing to borrow such a significant quantity of money.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So no, we have not. We do put this in place because we do have throughout the month of January until our February interim tax bills are starting to money starting to come in. We do have to borrow somewhere in the range of up to probably maximum about $20 million throughout January. We do that internally through ourselves. So we borrow from our own reserve funds and then just pay the interest back and forth between the general fund and the reserve fund. So we've never, in my time, we've never used the bank for this bank line in terms of our general borrowing.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote on clause two.
Waiting for one vote.
And that carries. Okay, on to report number 13 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number 13 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So first up for item 1A, we have a briefing from Ms. Roberts. Ms. Kennedy.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Yes. Your worship, I'm wondering about your ruling on the procedure for a briefing on an item that has not been reconsidered, that was already voted on.
So my ruling in this case is that because this is a recommend, this is a recommendation to reconsider that is coming from staff, that it is fair to give staff an opportunity to be able to provide some context about why the recommendation is to reconsider. So I would consider it to be in order in this particular case. However, you are correct that for the actual motion to reconsider, that debate is restricted until and unless the reconsideration passes from council.
So you're saying that a lengthy briefing is in order before reconsideration vote, which in itself only has a couple minutes of debate included, but because it's coming from staff, but not from council?
That's right.
The rules are different.
That's right. So in my view, I think that the briefing is necessary for council to be able to decide whether or not we would want to reconsider the item. So with that, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship. This report does include a series of recommendations, so I thought it would be helpful to provide a briefing. I'll start off by saying that the recommendations in this report do not change any of the existing service levels that are provided to the community service levels that are provided to the community with regard to the recycling service. Since 1994, municipalities in Ontario have been mandated to provide recycling services. And for more than 20 years, Kingston has delivered this service through a combination of in-house and contracted services, with the curbside collection for the east and west areas of the city being, being performed under a contract that we manage. And for the central part of the city, the collection service is being performed by city staff. There are three major components involved in the recycling process. There's the curbside collection. There's the processing that happens at the material recycling facility. Sometimes we call that the MRF, but it's, but the broader name is the Kingston Area Recycling Centre. And the last component, major component, is the marketing of materials. Since 2003, the program costs for the service have been funded on a 50-50 model with the, with the 50% generally coming from the producers of materials. And the cost for collection and processing have been increasing. And the revenue that's been generated through the marketing of materials has been decreasing since 2017, creating a greater tax burden. Over the past several years, Kingston has been exploring the feasibility of converting to a dual-stream processing system. The rationale for this change was to, is to improve customer ser, or customer convenience. Instead of having alternating blue box and gray box collection, alternating weeks, it would allow for collection of both in the same week. The, and, and the thinking behind that is if we can make the, the collection easier for residents, we could then increase the diversion rates. And in March 2019, council directed staff to pursue the next steps in recommendation that staff brought forward. And the next step was basically to issue two RFPs. One, to explore the costs to upgrade the material recycling facility to a two-stream processing system. And the other was for the collection contracts, which our current contracts for the east and west are, are going to expire on the 30th of June in 2020. And they're both linked. We need to understand if we are going to go to a dual stream because that impacts the nature of the contract that we would award for the collection processes. And so staff did issue both of those RFPs and has responses on both of them. As a precautionary measure, we also asked for a cost, just in case council decided not to pursue this option for upgrades that are required just simply to the maintenance of the, of the equipment, because we've been delaying that for a while pending getting a decision. In August of 2019, the province confirmed their intent and the timelines for municipalities to trans, to transition to full producer responsibility, basically making producers environmentally accountable and financially responsible for recovering resources and the, the reducing waste associated with the products and packaging. I will point out that there's an information, there's information on this in a call to action and a communication from AMO, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, on tonight's agenda. So these pending changes create some uncertainty, certainly with the future of the municipal recycling facility. Coupled with the fact that the cost that we received to convert to dual stream came in at slightly over $5 million, and the capital and budget that's been approved for that process is only $3.25 million. So with that in mind, and given that the collection contract is due to expire within the next six months, we felt it was important to bring to council the opportunity to position this, this community to transition to the new producer-paid regime where we would be able to recover 100% costs of the recycling service. And if we can, the sooner we transition, the sooner we're able to recover 100% of those costs. We, what, what we are talking about then is really it comes down to the, the award of a contract and, and whether or not we're going to proceed at this point in time to, to convert the MRF to a dual stream. And if that is the case, we would have to come back with a report at some point and increase the budget amendment, or ask for a budget amendment and, and know that answer before we can award a contract. I think that's all I, I have to offer for now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. And through you, I'm trying to get the timeline right in my head. And I recognize that this has come up at other council meetings and other meetings. But to be very clear, we need to move to full producer pay between 2023 and 2025? There's a two-year window? Is that correct?
Through you, your worship. That is correct. So the first wave of municipalities will begin to, to transfer their responsibilities under this new producer responsibility, starting January 1st, 2023, with the intention that all municipalities in Ontario will transition to that new regulation by the end of 2025.
Thank you. And that leads to my follow-up, which is, we don't know which municipalities go first. Is that right?
Through you, your worship. That is correct. There has been no identification of when those municipalities will go. What we do have is a communication that came from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, a call to action to, to councils urging them to pass resolutions of when they think they would like to transition, when it makes most sense for them, when contracts are up. And again, many municipalities are looking towards how to align themselves with this new change.
And my final question is, have any other municipalities in Ontario begun this transition? Or would we be the first if we pass one of these options tonight?
Through you, your worship. Passing these options doesn't mean that we're transitioning to this, to this new producer responsibility regime. What it means is that we're positioning ourselves to be able to do it very smoothly in the future and be in a position that we can recover 100% of our costs when that happens.
Thank you.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you. I'm just a little curious. I've been on EITP for about a decade now. And this kind of detailed service adjustment for waste management has always come to EITP for a more fulsome debate. I'm just curious why it's come directly to council. Perhaps somebody could address that.
Commissioner Kid.
Through you, your worship. Yes, we have had many, many discussions about the transition and, and about the recycling service at EITP. This has come directly to council because it's primarily a financial decision. We are at a crossroads. We have, we do not have enough budget, and it's a very risky time, in staff's opinion, to invest over $5 million in a facility that we are not sure what its future use is going to be under the new regime. And then, and the second piece is, is basically the award of, of a contract. So we did not see this as a service level change. And it's for that reason that we brought it directly to council.
Given the complexity of the report and the complexity of your answer just now, I don't know why this wouldn't still go through the usual process of going to an umbrella committee for full public input and then come back to council with a recommendation. I'm still curious about that. Thank you.
So I think the question was asked. We got an answer back from staff. Are there any other questions? Counselor Stroud.
Yeah, speaking of EITP, so I was also there the last time we discussed this file. We did vote on it in March of last year, so 10 months ago. And I remember some of the questions and the discussion at that time was around the uncertainty of the provincial regulations and the provincial changes. And that uncertainty was discussed at that time. And yet, we still recommended to council to proceed with the transition. So I guess my question to staff is, what exactly, I know some of it's in the report, but maybe we could state it again because there's people watching here tonight that haven't been wa, watching the whole time, especially the last iteration. So what has come up since March 2019 that would, that in staff's opinion drastically changed what was discussed in March 2019?
Commissioner Kid.
Through you, your worship. So a couple of things have happened. First of all, the direction to staff and the way that staff understood the report was that the March direction was not a goal. It was simply take the next step, which is issue the RFPs and find out what the costs of this could be. And there was, there was specific discussion at committee that evening that we would, in fact, come back. So we, even if this had come in at the $3.25 million and, and the uncertainty wasn't there, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have felt that we had the ability to simply move forward. We would have come back with a final recommendation, one way or the other. That's one piece of the answer. The second piece of the answer is, in March, we were still a few months away from the provincial election and we, which happened in June of 2019. And we were waiting to see whether a provincial election might change some of the direction that the province was speaking to. Am I getting that mixed up?
I, I don't think so. I think the provincial election was June of 2018.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Yes, there was a, there was a provincial election and I just got the year wrong. But we were still waiting for the, for the new government to confirm that they were going to continue to pursue these legislative changes, as had been discussed with the previous government. And we didn't get that confirmation finally until August of 2019. My apologies.
Okay, so the follow-up question is just to dive into that a little bit deeper. So, so in, in March 2019, we knew there was a new government, but we hadn't heard their position yet. And, and so what is it about their position that's significantly different from the previous governments that will, that would require us to reconsider our decision that we made not having heard their position? Because was their position not very similar in the end to the previous governments?
Commissioner Kid.
I might have to turn this over to the director. But in fact, their decision is very, very similar to previous governments, but we weren't sure. But we also had a timeline that we had to work to, which is understanding what the costs are and getting these RFPs out in the market for both the curbside collection and the costs, because there is a timeline that we're working against when the contract for collection will expire in June of this year.
Okay, Counselor Doherty.
Thank you. And through you. I was a little bit surprised when I read that where this includes that the city will amend its existing agreement with waste connections to include the central area. And I just wonder, why was that part of it when, when the discussion is about the kind of system that we're using? Why, why would we transition our services?
Ms. Roberts.
Through you, your worship. So more details have been determined. There's been more speculation around how these producers will operate and how they will meet their obligations and responsibilities. And what we know is that they're going to get full decision-making to meet these obligations under regulation, and they will be obligated to pay 100% of the costs. And if that is the case, we may not be responsible for even procuring that service any, any further. We may not be responsible for even putting out a contract in the future. Like they did in British Columbia, the producers themselves may put out RFPs to procure that service. And so looking at all of this and trying to understand, now we have dates around when this is going to happen, and proceeding with a longer-term contract to 2028, when we know transition is going to end in 2025, puts us in a, a risky position. We know that at some point, delivering this service in, in-house may have to be discontinued. We're recommending that it be discontinued sooner and that we extend the agreement with our existing provider so that it, it's packaged together and that we have a good understanding of what those costs are. Because if we continue to deliver the service afterwards, we have to be prepared that they are only going to be willing to pay us a market cost.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. It also, in, in the, in the report, it states that the, the new regime, which producers will pay 100% based on the market value for the service, therefore, the city would be responsible for the variance. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Ms. Roberts.
Through you, your worship. So there's some costs in there. So if, I, I'm going to use for an example, but there are, there are many numbers that are provided in the report. If there was any variance between a market price per ton or a market price per stop, then presumably what we have heard is that municipalities would continue to be on the hook to pay for that variance. So if our cost was $200 a ton and the market was 100, the city would still be responsible for funding that, that gap between the market value and what it costs us to self-deliver.
And my last question. So what's the concern then? Why are we not actually taking it to committee? Why, this is complicated and there's some speculation and it's very expensive. So it would take a few extra months to take it to committee, but it seems for all of us to make a really good decision. We really have to understand this in, in, in certainly greater depth.
So, so I think it's fair to say that staff have given an answer, but ultimately it is council's decision what we want to do with it. Okay. Any other questions from the, from the briefing? Oh, yes, Counselor Chappell.
Yes, thank you through your chair. With respect to the, the disposition of equipment, having questioned and, and been maybe perhaps critical in the past of purchasing procedures for equipment, I am very leery to liquidate any, any equipment. And so I'd like to know the process that would be utilized should we sell garbage trucks from our fleet.
Commissioner Kid.
Through you, your worship. When we have surplus equipment, usually in, in light-duty fleet, for example, or, or other places, we tend to, they're off, they're usually at end of life and we tend to run them through an auction. In this particular case, we would do much like, process much like we do with, with real estate, where we would get our own appraisal. We would get an independent appraisal and then we would work a negotiation on that, on that price. If there was a variance, it would be negotiated.
Okay. So seeing no other questions for the briefing, we'll then move to 1B, recommendations to align the city's recycling program with Ontario regulations for full producer responsibility. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. Given the, the clear complexities and the timing and the number of unknowns in this, I think it would be prudent to defer this report to committee, and I intend to make that motion right now. And that is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McLaren, that clause 1B of report number 13 from CAO recommend be deferred and referred to the council with the scheduled meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February the 18th, 2020, and that the EITP committee be authorized to hold a public consultation session on this matter at its meeting on Tuesday, February the 11th, 2020.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate or discussion with respect to time, place, or purpose? Counselor Neal.
I'm just a little curious, and this is a question for our clerks. If we're scheduling for February 18th, but the EITP, uh, public debate and discussion and input to council is happening February 11th, does that allow enough time to process that? Wouldn't we be better off with the first meeting in March?
Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of a procedural process, we can accommodate that turnaround from the 11th to the 18th. Yes.
Okay, any other further discussion with respect to time, place, or purpose? Counselor Stroud.
Further to Counselor Neal's question, I'm trying to wrap my head around what this would look like procedurally. So if passed, this deferral would mean there would be an item at EITP for public consultation only, but not, but not necessarily any discussion or debate between the members of the committee and staff? Is that correct?
Mr. Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What we anticipate is an information report going through to the February 11th meeting, providing additional information for the committee's deliberations. But you are correct, won't be debating the motions that'll be held on the, the second meeting in, in February.
And, and if passed, again, this procedurally, the outcome of the, of the committee meeting would have no bearing on the report, which would come back in the exact same form on February 18th.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't say it would have no bearing in the sense that you are consulting with the community and the committee will glean information from that consultation process that then can be used as part of the debate on the, the subsequent motions on the 18th.
Okay. So what we'll do is we will call the, the vote on the motion to defer. Counselor Neal, point of order.
Am I in a position to amend this?
So you've already spoken to the motion to defer.
Perhaps I would support anybody who wants to amend this.
Okay. Okay, good, good try, Counselor Neal. Okay. So we do have a motion to defer on the floor. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Okay, moving on to clause number two, audit and accountability fund, KPMG report. Counselor Neal.
Yes. Like our previous motion, this, this was something that is quite complex and came to us at a fairly late date on Monday. And unless somebody read the newspaper, the public weren't aware of this either. And I just want to say, I love living in Kingston. We can fill this room even when we don't give the information out to the public, which is a kind of interesting aspect of our city. I will say that I think it's, it's really I will say that I think it's, it's really, really critical that we have an opportunity to review this, because it is a very complex report. And a previous councillor, I believe Counselor Hill, pointed out that there were 200, over 200 recommendations, but those recommendations aren't even in this report that we've received. There were four that were highlighted. For, for a council that prides itself in transparency and open government, I don't know why we wouldn't have access to reading all of those recommendations. And for that reason, I have a minor amendment, and I believe I passed it down seeking for a seconder, but it's a really simple amendment that counts, that we replace the word endorse with the word receive the review in order for staff to answer questions that I would love to ask, but in, in... To Peter. Oh, sorry. Wrong person.
Okay, okay. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pause there. So you're proposing a motion to amend?
Yes.
That would replace the word endorse?
With receive.
That would replace receive in the first paragraph. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counsel Hill.
Thank you.
Okay. So Counsel Neal, you can now speak to the amendment.
I think in my usual fashion, I already have. Thank you very much.
Fair enough. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Counsel Stroud?
Oh, yes. I guess it's a question to staff about the change proposing the amendment. So if we simply receive the report, knowing that we don't know the suggested details of the implementation, which is to come at a future date, is, does this, does this wording change have an effect on the result? In other words, does, uh, it had, if we endorse the, this report, does it preclude us from a decision in the future once we see the implementation recommendations?
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So no, it, it doesn't have an impact in the sense that we, as staff, are still going to work with our teams and come back to you with some proposed implementation where it's policy-related, so you have an understanding of the implications that may be in terms of ta, staff capacity, time, or financial implication. What has been driving, obviously, the timing for this particular report has been the province. So I'm sure the province will be at some point in the near future asking us what our implementation plan will be in order to execute on this report that they have obviously provided funding for as part of their program. So that information will also be shared with council when we do receive additional information from the province.
I have a follow-up question about that. So yes, I'm, the only reason I am asking this question is I'm wondering if the wording endorse is tied to anything coming from the province, whether if we change it to receive, it would change the, the state of affairs of the province.
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor, no, it, it won't.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Sorry. Just to sum up, I'm satisfied with those answers that it is, that the amendment is a good idea, because the perception that we are receiving the report and withholding our final decision is better than the perception that we're endorsing the report as is. Thank you.
Okay. So we will call the vote on the motion to amend. That carries. So now on the recommendation as amended. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on Clause 2 as amended. And that carries. Clause 3, Affordable Housing Capital Contribution, 1752 Bath Road. Counsel Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. I want to take a very quick moment to strongly express my support. As the district councillor for the area, I had the opportunity and the pleasure, really, to meet with the developer and the nonprofit, Anguonada, and talk through many different deliberations that I had about it, and they were able to provide very good answers. I think the report reflects that. And the thing that I like most about it is twofold. One is, it's a great example of the whole community coming around a project for affordable supportive housing, private developer, the city providing some funding, and then obviously a nonprofit through Anguonada. I think that's an excellent type of collaboration. And then, secondly, I think that it's precedent-setting in that it's a private developer saying, "Look, we will provide units at 60% of market value." And I think that if we can encourage that from other developments in our community, we'll go a long way to addressing the affordable housing crisis that we face. So I think it's an obvious positive for our community, and I hope that everyone will support it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, Counsel Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. I can understand why this is attractive to, in some ways, viewed from a certain lens. But I want to just make a point that, once again, this is a deal that takes place and has an end. In the first case, the 60% average market rents are, last 25 years, and then we lose them. And then the other eight units, the eight units, yeah, last 20 years, and then we lose them. Counsel Neil and I pointed out this repeatedly, that this is really not a great deal in those terms. And it, it's, I, I wish we would spend more money building our own affordable housing, which could last indefinitely and is cheaper if you think about the 50 or more years you would get out of that building, if you look after it. And I've calculated it out, and it is cheaper than these deals. So I, I realize, I'm glad to hear what Counsel Kylie had to say, and I'm glad the neighborhoods rallied around, but not, the other point to be made is that Anguonada is a provincial, they've funded organization. They do good work. They've got houses all over the place that take care of people and look out for them, and that's all to the good. So the point is that we are putting municipal money into something that should be paid for by the province, and that concerns me. And so those are my two main points. I do have a question about the average market rent. When we did this, I'm sure staff calculated it, as they would. So what is the 60% of average market rent for this, this development?
Ms. Nordberg?
Through you. So for the 60% affordable market rent, it's a one, the proposal at this point is a one-bedroom, so that would be about $600 a month. For the 80%, which is 80% average market rents, those would, in the case if, if they're one-bedrooms, they would be about $800 a month. Given, given the fact that it's based on current average market rent, obviously those will potentially change once the new CMHC data comes in.
So those are good numbers if you're looking, if you're, you're employed and you're going out and, you know, looking for an apartment. They're not so good if you're on social assistance, okay? The one-bedroom, I believe that's what Ms. Nordberg said, at $600, you're not getting anything like that on OW. So the 80%, $800, that's better, perhaps, but I just want people to recognize the compromised nature of these deals. All right? Now, having said that, I know that Volper, I talked at length about that with him and his son, and I applaud what they're doing. As Counsel Kylie said, I don't disagree with anything he said, but as the municipality, we have dedicated a certain amount of money, and I think for this, and then this is going to disappear. We should be looking long-term. And for those who think in prudent and conservative terms, this, this is an investment we should be looking forward towards the future, not just in this council, but the next one, but several councils afterwards. We've got an asset, and we've got it under our control, and we can protect certain portions of our market. So I'm not expecting to change anybody's vote here, unless you want to, you know, but, but I am, I, I really think this is an ongoing problem, and we need to be aware that these shortcomings are baked into these deals. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chappell?
Thank you, through your, your chair. It is my understand, Counsel Kylie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I have also met with the developer and was quite interested in knowing that the residents intended for this through partnership with Anguonada are going to be those that are less, but less, have less mental capacity there and need a little assistance on their own. They're not, they're not, they're very vulnerable members of society. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, that there'd be two floors of supportive housing, which is also affordable, but it's with assistance from staff at Anguonada.
That, to me, sounds like a very reasonable request.
Thank you. Counsel Doherty?
Thank you, and through you. I just want to try to understand this a little bit better. The Affordable Housing Program and the amount of $2,922,000, and that's for 28 affordable units, so that's about $104,000. So how long will those properties actually belong to the city? I'm just kind of following up on what Counsel Hutchinson was concerned about, and I think that is, he, he's raising a really good point, because we're investing a lot of money in something that we actually don't own. So I just want to, just go over those details, please.
CAO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So a, a couple of things. Usually, the municipality doesn't own affordable housing properties, so they would be owned by other organizations, whether they're non-for-profit like Kingston Frontenac Housing Corporation or Tippi Moza, et cetera. So we do work with a number of non-for-profit organizations. And then we also have affordable housing agreements with the private sector. So in some cases, we actually provided capital funding, in other cases, we provided rent supplements or a combination of both, but the city doesn't actually own and operate its affordable housing units. So in this case, what we're talking about is a contribution, a capital contribution of $3 million for the 20 units that are going to have supportive housing. And those are going to be obviously targeted to people that are recipients of the Ontario Disability Support Program, which my understanding, based on our discussions with Anguonada, this would work in terms of some of the funding that they receive for their shelter allowance funding. The other $400,000 that's being proposed is to help support the construction of the additional eight units that would be at 80% market rent. Those would not necessarily be strictly restricted to clients of Anguonada, although my understanding is that there is still some conversation there happening, and there's some potential flexibility. So that's how the, the funding is proposed. The, the breakdown that we have provided to council is to show where the funding would come from, because a portion of it comes from different actual programs. So we wanted to make sure that, that was broken down for council to understand how it would be financed.
Counsel Bowman?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I'm going to support this, and I think part of my rationale is here is that we obviously know that there's a mayor's task force on affordable housing. There's an opportunity here for 28 affordable housing units. And at the end of the day, the people that are going to be serviced by this, they don't really care about, you know, some of the little details of nickel and diming and trying to find the best deal on affordable housing. I think this is a portfolio where there's many solutions. There's no one-size-fits-all perfect solution to providing these units. I think the main thing that we need to do is provide access to these units. So if we can provide 28 affordable housing units at this property, I think that's a boon to the people that are out there looking for it. Is it always going to be the best way? No. Is it the only way? No. But I think a diversification in how we provide these units is key going forward, because we know that if we try to put them, all the eggs in one basket, what can happen? So in this essence, I think it's just looking at it logically, could it be a little bit more expensive? Yes. But at the same time, if you were to say, "I've got 28 other units that I can give you a little bit cheaper," then we could compare apples to apples. But we don't have that offer right now. So this is what's on the floor. I think it's a good idea to support this and basically allow this to happen. Do we have to support it a little bit as a municipality? Yes. Is this something where, going forward, there'll be other opportunities like this? Possibly. But it's something that, at the end of the day, realistically, provides 28 affordable housing units, and that's really what you're voting on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause 3. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. Okay. So I'm looking around the council table. Would people like a five-minute recess? Okay. Take a five-minute recess, and then we will pick up at Report Number 14. Take a five-minute recess, and then we will pick up at report number 14. That was so good. That was so good. Oh, my gosh. It was so good. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask everyone to grab their seats, please. Okay, if I can get people to grab their seats, we're going to reconvene. Okay, so with that, we will move on in our agenda to report number 14 from Heritage Kingston.
I'm pleased to present the report from Heritage Kingston, duly moved and seconded. Thanks.
Moved by Councillor Doherty, seconded by Councillor Oosterhoff. That report, number 14, from Heritage Kingston, be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of items under both Clauses 1 and 2. Would anyone like any of them separated? Seeing none, we will vote on the report as a whole. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to report number 15 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
I rise to present said report from the Administrative Policies, moved and seconded for council's consideration.
Moved by Councillor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Kylie, that report, number 15, from the Administrative Policies Committee, be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Councillor Chappell? Number 1. Okay, so first, we will deal with number 1, and then we will do a vote on 2 and 3. So number 1 is discounted fees for municipal programs and services. Councillor Chappell?
I would actually like that clause separated into 2, so that I'll be able to make a decision on age-based versus the assistance program. So I'd like to have two separate votes.
Okay, so in the recommendation from the committee, there are five paragraphs. Can you just indicate which paragraphs you would like to be lumped together?
Well, you could lump, simply the second paragraph, age-based categories, be separated from the income limit of my Kingston Municipal Assistance Program. And then the subsequent first, third, and fourth can be lumped with each of them. Basically, I just want to be able to vote in favor of age-based discounts.
Okay, so what we're going to propose is that we will do a vote on paragraphs 1 and 2 together, then a vote on paragraphs 3 and 4 together, and the vote on paragraph 5. Okay, so first, we will call the vote on paragraphs 1 and 2. Oh, I'm sorry. But before we do that, so that's what we'll do with the vote. Is there any else that we should speak to?
Yeah, one question of clarification about this that came up at committee, and I was trying to parse it out in the language before us tonight. There's a discussion about, for lack of a better term, I don't like it, but I'll use it, double dipping. And it says in Clause 1, "at current discount levels." And my understanding was that the discount for, before us tonight, would be deepening from 20% to 50%, but that people who qualified based on age would get it based on that, but not also if they qualified based on income? And I'm wondering if that could be clarified, just for the benefit of the rest of council.
Ms. Hitchen?
Thank you. Through your worship, in discussions with our transit manager post the admin policies meeting, he's aware that council wanted that to happen. He's looking at that implementation that happened in the fall with some other changes to the fares at Kingston Transit. So that quote-unquote "double dipping" will be removed as of the fall of 2020. That transit's the only area where that happens, so.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And then, on the language about current discount levels, is it not a different level? Is it not moving to a greater discount?
Ms. Hitchen?
So from the time this is implemented until the fall, things will remain the same. The only change will happen, and it will affect our charter's bylaw as well. There'll be a removal of the ATP categories for youth and seniors, and ATP will be at the 50% rate for all ages.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll call the vote then on paragraphs 1 and 2. Please vote. That carries. Now we'll do a vote on clause, or rather, paragraphs 3 and 4. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 2. And now, paragraph number 5. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, now we will call the vote on Clause 2 and 3. Number 2, review of right-of-entry bylaw number 99-167. And number 3, City of Kingston Good Neighbor Guidelines. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, report number 16 from the Environment, Infrastructure, and Transportation Policies Committee.
Pardon me, Your Worship, I'm still catching up on my supper. Yes, I rise to present report number 16 from EITP, moved and seconded for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by Councillor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Doherty, that report, number 16, from the Environment, Infrastructure, and Transportation Policies Committee, be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, state of the environment reporting? We'll call the, oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Kylie?
One comment quickly. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I thought that the indicators or the criteria were top-notch, so I'm very pleased to see that going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll call the vote. And that carries. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole. We have no information reports. We have no information reports to members of council. Mislanious business. Number 1, that the resignation of Dr. Daniella Luke, Technical Representative, Royal Military College, from the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum be received with regret. Can I have a, oh, and we'll do this as one. And that Dr. Tamsin Lang be appointed to the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum as a Royal Military College Technical Representative. Can I have a mover for that, please? Moved by Councillor Neal, seconded by Councillor Doherty. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. Number 1, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Bohm. Whereas a stone-dust surface is environmentally less intrusive and reduces unnecessary urbanization of existing conservation lands adjacent to a protected wetland rather than an asphalt surface. And whereas a stone-dust surface is perhaps more cost-efficient to install and maintain than an asphalt surface, whereas a stone-dust surface meets at the needs of active transportation and accessibility on urban pathways, including current community stakeholders, and whereas current data is insufficient to indicate an asphalt surface on said pathway is necessary, therefore be it resolved that City of Kingston staff use stone dust instead of asphalt for the surface finishing of the proposed multi-use pathway between Parkway and Queen Mary Road until such time as user data for this pathway exists that would justify a move to asphalt. Councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this motion came to me as a result of a citizen engagement. Many of the residents in the area are concerned that this trail will be paved, and that is, in fact, what the plan is right now. And it is not, in our opinion, the best way to do things. One of the things that we, as a city, have committed to is more sustainability, more environmental concerns. And when we have those as values, one of the things we do is we change the way we do things. So it becomes a little harder. Of course, it's always easier just to dump things, or to do it in the most easy way possible. But part of becoming sustainable is that we do things a little bit differently. And one of the things that we're doing a little bit different, that we're suggesting here, is stone dust versus pavement. As the delegation had pointed out, this is essentially the same as a huge Loblaw's parking lot. And the impermeability of pavement is what is a major concern to a lot of people, as well as the aesthetics, and as well as the effects on the local environment. So what we're asking here is not that we don't develop the thing. We're increasing the accessibility here. We're increasing the ability to access active transportation over what is there right now. There are hills, and there are lumps. We're going to be flattening this and making it smooth. We're going to make it more accessible, no matter what happens. What we're asking for is that we consider that this is an environmentally better solution. And we're also making this slightly vague. We're using stone dust, but there are different grades of stone dust, so that we can achieve that sweet spot of the best environmental with the best accessibility. All the reasons that were given to me by staff, and I'm sure we'll hear from them shortly, can be mitigated. We can make the situation better from an environmental perspective, and that's what this is about. We, as the, I guess, where the buck stops, are here to sometimes make exceptions to policies that could be done better. And this is one where 718 citizens have said they would prefer this other way of doing things, and it happens to be a better environmental way to do things. So as a democratic body, where we have the final, where we have the final authority on this, I'm asking that an exception be made to the policy, and that we choose the more, excuse me, the more environmentally friendly option, and let staff come up with the best sweet spot on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others that we should speak? Councillor Oosterhoff?
Yeah, I applaud this motion, and will support it. I just think that the voice of the community is very important here, and 700 signatures is quite a signature and quite an accomplishment to achieve. And I think that, I kind of wonder why it has to come to this, and why in these, I guess I'm looking for common practice, so what's the best practice for a sensitive area like this? This seems like a reasonable request from the community, and considering all that has to be done there. I guess the question I have to ask is, the only question I have is, is there accessibility issues here, you know, as far as that goes? Does it limit, is that why the hard surface was required? And, but I guess that's the question I have first half.
Okay, Commissioner Kit?
Through you, Your Worship. A hard surface is definitely a more accessible service. There's no question about it. This, the design of this particular pathway in the active transportation plan is meant to take it from what is currently a recreational trail and make it an actual part of the active transportation network. So it's a fairly important link. The consultation on the active transportation plan identified this. It is important to understand that this particular segment of connection is piggybacking on a Utilities Kingston project. And so Utilities Kingston is upgrading the combined sewer in this location that runs through here, and we're joining with them. We did consult with, and had a project consultant from the Municipal Advisory Committee, and we always envisioned it to be an asphalt surface. It also is really important, because we do not maintain winter access on anything that's not an asphalt surface. And so if it's not that, there's no plan for us to maintain that in the winter months, which would mean that it wouldn't be accessible year-round.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you. If you look at this request from the point of view of a district councillor, bringing forward a huge petition, and, you know, upswell, or whatever it's called, groundswell of opinion in the neighborhood for retaining more natural feel and better permeability, like if you just look at the pros that are suggested by the petition and by the members of the public, it seems like a slam dunk. But if you look at it from the perspective of what do you need in an active transportation network, it's more problematic. So what we have here is a dilemma, because it is very difficult to ignore the request from the district councillor and the members of the public, which is very specific. But none of those members of the public were privy to the high-level discussions about the importance of a functional active transportation network. I have, however, that being said, I have cycled and walked this stretch, and it functions as a cycling route despite it not being fully accessible. It probably doesn't function as a motorized wheelchair route, though. So that's what you lose. And with, but with the, so the challenge, as the councillor suggests, is to be able to engineer it with a permeable surface, stone dust, I suppose, to be able to allow a maximum of accessibility, but not as great the accessibility as the hard surface. Kind of trying to get the best of both worlds. I think it's probably doable. I have to mention, though, that it's, I wonder why we, why the petition had to specifically indicate the type of surface? Because things are changing all the time with active transportation. Someone came, I think it was DITP, and told, showed us ways of doing parking lots where it would actually be permeable. Was that, was that with DITP, wasn't it? So I'm wondering if maybe there are other options that are permeable and better, that achieve the same intent of the petition that don't specify stone dust. So I'm wondering, you know... So I'm wondering, you know, whether we're unnecessarily restricting ourselves with specifically micromanaging the type of surface. Sometimes when you rely on crowd sourcing an idea, you get the old ideas and you don't get the innovative ideas, right? You get what people are used to. They like the stone dust. They've seen it somewhere else. The one thing I know is, we had this discussion when it was Counsel Hutcheson's district that was being discussed with the KMP Trail, the urban section of the KMP Trail that goes along the river. On that, in that case, permeability was less important because it's right beside the river. So if it runs off, it runs into the river. The, the thing that, that also, I think, actually worked out is for the turtle nesting habitat, obviously they can't do it on the asphalt surface, so they don't go there and they don't get run over by bikes and everything else. That actually I saw as kind of a plus, and then there was the accessibility concern, which kind of trumped everything. So I already sort of went through all this thinking on, and the higher the volume you want in a, in a link, the more important it is to be durable. So what we've, what we're doing here with this is, it will be more, more naturalized and perhaps more desirable for walking and for the nature experience, but it will, it comes at a cost of higher maintenance and more, more degradation. So you'll, you'll have times if it's not maintained properly, it will be in worse shape than it would have been if it was hardscaped. So there's, there's trade-offs here. I'm still going to side with the community and with the district counselor, but I just want to say that there are, it's not a slam dunk. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Chappelle?
Yes, through you, your chair. Thank you. I spent a lot of time thinking about this particular example of civic engagement and applaud all those who voiced their perspectives on this, but from what I understand, the current recommended, recommended design is for a asphalt pathway, which will therefore provide year-round access, as was mentioned, to users, especially those with mobility devices, allows for a broadest range of active transportation users, including walking, cycling, rollerblades, yes, I still have a pair, skateboarding, road bikes, street bikes, wheelchairs, walkies, or canes, all those sort of devices. And by being paved, it also offers the opportunity for the year-round maintenance. Otherwise, it will be closed. So in speaking with staff, I learned that the current design was made available for public consultation in 2019. Discussion with Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, MAC, on the project team, signed off on the asphalt pathway as well as the rest stop locations. I wish to note that this type of asphalt pathway is also typical of what exists in the urban portions of the city off-road multi-use pathways, including urban sections of the KMP Trail, the Lee Wyre Grant Multi-Use Pathway, and pathways that this segment directly connects between Princess Street and Portmouth, Portsmouth. So my chief concern with respect to the motion before us this evening is how it will impact the efforts of staff and their commitment to deliver on the active transportation plan previously approved by council. The pathway being discussed is an urban pathway and cannot be compared with a rural pathway like the KMP Trail, which I might add is paved in the urban sections of the trail, as alluded to by Counsel Stroud. As such, many residents have reached out to me, are concerned with how this motion will impact the urban pathways currently planned in their own neighborhoods. And from a management and practical perspective, the continuity of this type of active transportation facility is a significant consideration for citywide active transportation routes that Counsel Stroud has alluded to as well, and currently in existence and under development. And so supporting such a motion, in my opinion, undermines professionalism of our staff, and I'm certain that Counsel Hill will agree with me in that regard. And frankly, the stone dust pathway would not provide the same level of accessibility for all users, to address Counsel Neal's concerns, as per the current city standards, and would not be cleared during the winter months, as noted. I heard arguments about turtles. I agree. All council knows that I love turtles and trees, and I've asked staff about the potential impacts of installing this type of substrate on the wetland, near a wetland area, and staff at the city's environment department have indicated that the stone dust pathway may create preferential turtle nesting habitat and create conflict between the protection of the nesting sites, and which means that pathway may need to be closed as well in the spring through early fall. So finally, we've heard arguments about the potential cost savings, and I say that this is simply speculative. Surely, the cost standpoint, there would be some capital savings in placing stone dust rather than asphalt. However, this would likely be offset by the increased amount of ongoing maintenance required along the pathway, especially if there are, is there desire to maintain a year-round connection. You'll get pitting on road where it's, you know, the reason we are, are working in our rural communities like Counsel Oosterhoff and getting away from gravel roads is because of the natural potholes that occur. So from the standpoint of placing stone dust now and completing it as an asphalt pathway at a later time, I heard from Ms. Kidd that there's a cost savings in completing this work as part of a larger Utilities Kingston project that's underway, and I would suggest that we're in the fiscal perspective, looking to save money. So in my perspective, the material mobilization costs of one component of this, however, a future upgrade to asphalt pathway would require additional consultation, design, CCRA approval, potential new permitting. It will require that this area be disrupted for a second time, and therefore the naturalist aspect will be disrupted for a second time in consideration of other environmental concerns. So in short, I cannot support the motion as presented, despite the desires of the representative in the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Hutcheson.
Thank you, your worship. I think Counselor Stroud and, and I've heard Counselor Chappelle indicated at least the conflicting needs or desires that come out from this. I did deal with this issue in my district on the Heritage Trail or what you might call the, the part along the river that is sometimes called the Heritage Trail, but it's also called the KMP Trail. And I did have people pursuing the stone dust alternative. To this day, I'm not sure whether they were right or they were wrong, but in the end, I thought this trail's going to get a lot of use. Park was always used, a lot more than was generally considered. And so I acceded to staff's, and I desired to put asphalt in for that purpose of it. But this is not a downtown trail used by residents and office workers and people taking lunch and people going for picnics and, you know, and so on, on a constant basis. And, and so wear and tear was a real consideration. It seems to me that in this case, it's not, usage is not as great, or at least we can't demonstrate that it would be, and I don't understand intuitively why we would think it would be. So, and what attracts me here is that the resolve clause says, until such time as user data on this pathway exists that would justify a move to asphalt. So the way I'm looking at this, we saw the pictures up here. We're going to widen that pathway, which is just like a rut right now. We're going to level it. We're going to improve it markedly, like it'll be transformed. And so I'm going to support the stone dust option, because I think in this instance, it's, it's, it'll be fine. And if not, direction of the council says, come back and tell us why you need to change it. So that will be fine by me. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I, I, maybe I'm not understanding the active transportation plan right, but my understanding of it is that what we're trying to do is we're trying to link what we already have, there are roadways, with safe and accessible pathways and routes for kids to get to school, for people to be, to get out and recreate themselves, for cyclists, for, for all of the people in our community, including people with disabilities. And I think what we're trying to do as well is to ensure that, that these active transportation routes are available throughout the year. And so if the effect of this is that we're going to close this pathway for an extended period of time, or it becomes unavailable to lots of folks in our community who would otherwise like to access it, then we're really defeating the purpose of an active transportation plan. So, you know, on the basis of what staff has recommended and their, I think their belief that, that, that in this, in the integration of our, of our networks for, for people to get out and move around the city, and the fact that we want people to use these all year-round, I don't know how we would, how, despite the good, you know, intentions of the citizens of that district, why would we support something that effectively reduces the active transportation plan to six months? And why not do that everywhere? You know, so it's, I, I can't support this just because I don't think it, it is in keeping with the intent of the active transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kylie?
Thank you. And through you, I was hoping to get two things confirmed or denied by staff, which, one is directly related to Counsel Hill's comment. Will the stone surface be avail, available to be used throughout the year, say like at Le Moine's Point? They have stone surfaces that are cleared during the winter and are able to be used by the majority, though perhaps not all of the users.
Commissioner Kidd?
Through you, your worship. The pathways, the urban pathways are not cleared for winter control purposes unless they are an asphalt surface. So the answer would be no. But there is also a very valid concern about turtle habitats, and we are dealing with that in, in the waterfront areas, and I think particularly around Doug Flure Park. There are several months when we're not able to access sections of that location because of the turtle nesting, so.
Mm-hmm. And relatedly to the environment, which was my second question, on issues of runoff, is there any data to show that it's better to have asphalt that runs off or the permeability of stone, which will soak in water, and how that relates to the wetland next door?
Through you, your worship. I, I do not have that data with me. I can tell you that the, the permits are required to, for this surface type and for this pathway through CRCA, and they have approved it. So I'm sorry, I don't have any specific data in terms of runoff.
No, that's fine. Permits for the paving of it, just to clarify.
Yes, we do. The, the design was circulated, CRCA is part of the technical circulation, and we haven't had any concerns brought forward from them.
Okay, thank you.
If I could indulge, there is a really important point that I think I need to make with regard to the intent of this trail connection and as part of the broader AT network, because it is a network that we're trying to build, and that's what's been designed. And the one thing that we haven't spoken of is, is how this will benefit our transit users. So on either end of this trail, we have several multi-residential buildings, and this particular piece of the network is designed to create an option of connectivity, either for those living in the Princess Parkway area or for those living on, at the Bath Road, Queen Mary access. And if, depending on where they were traveling along either Princess or Queen Mary and, and out to the western end of the city, you could take this pathway from one or the other and save a transfer at the Kingston Center or a longer circuitous route on transit to be able to get where you're going. And that's a really important component of why it was identified as a, as a piece of the network. So it's, that's something council should be aware of.
Okay. Next on my list is Counsel Ossenek.
Thank you, your worship. A question to staff, is this trail lit at nighttime?
Commissioner Kidd?
Through you. I do not believe it is lit at nighttime.
Thank, thank you. So I support this motion. I don't support paving over paradise, and when you do the Google Maps of this trail, it is paradise. It's, you know, it, I can't say it's like an urban trail, really. It's, you know, trees and, and bush and woods on either side for a large section of this trail. I think the fact that it won't be plowed over wintertime is sort of a red herring, to tell you the truth, because if you're working during the day and you get off work at 4:30 at night, over like the past two months and probably for another two months, it's going to be pitch black. So you won't be able to use this trail anyway at nighttime, you know, to get home. And, and so if it's plowed or not, it doesn't matter. It also, it looks dangerous, right? So it's good for daytime use, and, you know, I know that it's for daytime use, and it's fantastic to, you know, get from one end of Princess Street down to Bath Road, but it's not something that I would really want to see my kids doing on a regular basis near dusk, because to me, it just looks, it looks dangerous. So I have no problem with this being left as stone dust. And as far as turtles go, if people got closer to turtles, all the more better, right? It's better education for all of the city instead of everything being concentrated at Doug Flure Park. So I definitely support this motion.
Okay, Counsel Neal?
Couple of questions, if I can remember them. It's getting late, to staff. With the proposed hard surface, first of all, I'm assuming that it, it could be made so that it would be a permeable hard surface, like we sometimes do in parking lots, where there is an opportunity for the water to properly drain. Is that, since it wouldn't be a high-traffic area, would that be a, a consideration?
Commissioner Kidd?
Through you, your worship. I don't have a technical answer. We haven't actually explored, because everything in the design and the consultation and the planning that we've done was to have it as a hard surface. I, I, I won't say no, that it's not possible. It may well be possible. I just, I do not have that answer, and we haven't explored it at this point in time.
Thank you. I, I am concerned about shortening the opportunity for this trail to be used as a multipurpose trail. So would there be, would, do you foresee if it isn't a hard, hard surface? First of all, if it is a hard surface, how well would it be maintained in the winter? And if it isn't a hard surface, would, would it be, would we be forced to close the trail at certain times of the year?
Commissioner Kidd?
Through you, your worship. If it is a hard surface, it will be maintained to the same service standards that we maintain the other hard surface urban pathways. So the KMP Trail, that, so, and, and I haven't had any concerns expressed about the level of maintenance on that. So that would be one answer. It will definitely be inaccessible for certain points of the year if it's not a hard surface. The, the intent is to upgrade this recreational trail to an actual pathway, multi-use pathway that is part of the transportation network. So that's why we, we designed it based on it being a hard surface.
I, with some reluctance, will be voting against this recommendation then, because I think we talk about wanting to encourage active transportation and to create a pathway that can only be used part of the year, I don't think is, is a full commitment to what we've always talked about, which is active transportation and more accessible pathways year-round. So I will not be voting for this recommendation.
Great, thank you. Nearly every member of council has spoken to this motion. Counsel Doherty?
So therefore, I feel like I should too. And I agree with Counsel Neil. A lot of work has gone into planning an active transportation network in our city, and this is one portion of it that we're talking about. And while I think a lot, all the points, a lot of the points about the, the stone dust are very valid, I, I think we have to look at the larger vision that we are committed to, and I will be not supporting this motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Just have a couple of questions, just to clarify the implications of this motion. So, the first thing that we heard from staff is about the potential implications of turtle habitats with the stone dust pathway. So, I just want to, I want to clarify, because I think a comment was made that that could be a good thing, but is there a risk that with turtle habitat encroachment, that sections of the trail could be closed off?
Through you, your worship. It has been our experience that where we have active turtle nesting, we also have requests to avoid those areas and ensure that we don't disrupt the nesting process.
So, I think my big concern is that it could actually be inaccessible, more than just in the winter, if that's true. My second question relates to something Counselor Hutchinson said. He was talking about the resolve clause that says, well, we could do stone dust for now, and then maybe do a move to asphalt in the future. And I'm just wondering if staff could just give us an indication of the cost differential? So, if Utilities Kingston is doing some work in the area, what, can you give us an order of magnitude of, if we went with asphalt now, to align with that work versus doing asphalt later on?
Your worship, I do not have a costing for later on. I can tell you that the cost of the surface now, as part of the broader Utilities Kingston project, is about $100,000. If we were to come back at a later date and want to do that, I don't have a dollar amount, but I can assure you it would be more. We would have to remobilize, we would be disrupting the area again, there would probably be more consultation, there would be more design costs, additional permit issuing. So, I'm sorry, I can't put a specific number on it, but I can guarantee you it would be significantly more money than what it is to do as part of this Utilities Kingston project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair to you.
Counselor McLaren, you have the last word.
Thank you. I've seen wheelchairs at LeMoyne's Point. Can you explain to me why those wheelchairs could not use this trail?
Commissioner Kidd.
Through you, your worship. No, actually, I cannot, Counselor. I'm sorry.
So, it's accessible in LeMoyne's Point for wheelchairs, and it's claimed that it's not going to be accessible in this one. I find that odd. Second, how many times have you closed LeMoyne's Point that also has stone dust for turtle habitats?
Through you, your worship, again, that's not an answer that I have. I do have a bit of information on Doug Flure Park, if you're interested.
Third, in the winter, a lot of people who are fair riders, fair walker, fair weather walkers, tend to reduce the amount of walking and biking that they do. But hardcore, active transportation users do not. And I understand that the trail is actually being used right now by those hardcore. Is an increase, this new trail upgrade, if we were to use stone dust, is that still an upgrade over what we have now?
Commissioner Kidd.
Through you, your worship, it would definitely be an upgrade over what exists today.
So, we would be increasing the likelihood of active transportation use. It will be increasing the accessibility, and it happens to be what the residents in the area want. So, it seems like we're still winning, and we're still advancing the active transportation plan. We're still increasing the ability of people to access this, and we're following the democratic principles if we do this. We are looking for more information about who uses this. Will more people be using it? Clearly, it's definitely an upgrade. We've got plenty of evidence that people still use this, even in the wintertime, when it's not paved, or, sorry, when it's not plowed, because LeMoyne Point is still popular in the wintertime. There's no reason to think that people won't use this just because it's not paved. And it is still definitely an upgrade. That would seem to me that we should go with this. And so, instead of discouraging 718 residents in the area, I think you should support this. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote on new motion number one. Please vote. That carries by a vote of seven to five. Okay. Onto new motion number two, moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor McLaren. Whereas traffic and traffic speeds on Baggett Street between Ordnance Street and Ragland Road have, with the absence of traffic calming measures, been a source of increasing resident concern for a number of years. Whereas this area of Baggett Street has been repopulated in recent years with families with young children, and traffic safety is a neighborhood concern. Whereas staff are cautious in recommending all-way stops at intersections solely for traffic calming purposes, despite the installation of stop signs being seen as a tangible action for the residents who have submitted a petition of well over 125 names of area residents supporting the installation of stop signs. Whereas the residents of the area are requesting that the City of Kingston take immediate action and install stop signs on the north and south sides of the intersection of Baggett Street and North Street, partway between Ordnance Street and Ragland Road, to create a four-way stop to increase the safety of drivers, bikers, and pedestrians, especially children. Therefore, be it resolved that council support the request of residents and direct city staff to install stop signs on the north and south side of the intersection of Baggett Street and North Street. Counselor Hutchinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. So, I think this motion is relatively self-explanatory. This has been a problem for, I would say, six or seven years. Talking to staff, they noticed the uptick in emails from 2016. It's simply the problem is that the road was designed too wide for a residential area, which happened at a certain time in the history of the downtown, and now we think differently, right? So, I think that the residents, you know, you will notice that this has got a third and a fourth paragraph that's almost the same as Counselor Chappell's, that council passed by a majority the last time. And I understand the arguments that staff can make in this case, and in many ways, I support them. But I think, you know, six, seven years is too long. And I would want people to support this, because speeding is a problem, and there are a lot of young kids in this stretch, okay? And this will help. Now, I did a discussion with Ms. Kidd about the traffic calming policy. She agrees that has issues, and I said I would give her an opportunity to address council and say what she has to say, because it is important.
Commissioner Kidd.
Through you, your worship. I may as well go for a hat trick. So, in, as I've expressed before, and in my discussion with Counselor Hutchinson today, we acknowledge that the current traffic policy definitely needs to be reviewed and updated, and that we need to have more options and more expeditious ways to deal with traffic calming requests. So, traffic calming is a concern in the community. It's a concern in just about every community you can look at. This particular location was requested for review in 2016. There is a two-way stop there now. And at the time, the warrants didn't justify adding an all-way stop. We have not looked at it since 2016, I don't believe, and so I'm not sure where it is at today. I will say, as always, that stop signs are not an effective traffic calming measure. That's not the right tool. However, I recognize that there is frustration and demand. Staff is planning to bring a report to EIT Committee in April of this year with a review of the traffic calming policies and offering some options. So, should council approve this motion, we will, we will obviously move forward to implement. But I'm hoping that we can hold off on more of these types of motions until we can at least bring forward a traffic calming policy that I think would suit the needs of the community better.
Counselor Hutchinson, is there anything else that you, you still have one, you've got three minutes on the clock.
I'll reserve to speak last.
Okay. Counselor Hill.
So, I'm sure Counselor Hutchinson knows what I'm going to say, since I said it all at our last meeting. But, you know, it's, there's a couple of things. First of all, intuitively, when I was going around campaigning, you know, and people were complaining about traffic calming, obviously, stop signs are the answer. Or, obviously, speed bumps are the answer, or, you know, and so you do tend to kind of come to simplistic solutions. A lot of citizens, I think, you know, that I've spoken to, certainly see that as an easy solution to all of the problems. So, I, the other day, decided I would just park at an intersection at Glen Castle and Henderson, and I, which is a four-way stop. And I watched as one car after another, after another, rolled through that stop. What seems to be, to make complete intuitive sense, when you ask the experts for their opinion, will tell you, as Commissioner Kidd just did, that stop signs are not a good traffic calming measure. And somehow, we have to, I think, have the collective courage to go back to our folks and say, "I'm sorry, but this doesn't work." Because otherwise, every time one of our residents gathers together, you know, a few of their fellow residents, and brings this forth, we're going to be debating this at council. We have a plan. And as Commissioner Kidd said, there's a plan coming to EITP around traffic calming. We have to stick to the plan. You know, otherwise, this is all we're going to do. The mayor said last month that this should come to council once in a term. Well, here we are, the very next meeting, debating this again. This is not the right way to go. We need to rely on the expertise of the staff who understand these issues, and I think recognizes the level of concern that's being expressed to each individual counselor. But in the meantime, we've got to stand up and say, "I'm sorry, but you're wrong. This is not the way to do it." And just because you think it is, or you say it often enough, doesn't make it right. So, I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Ossenek.
Thank you, your worship. I support this motion. I believe the local councillor knows the district best. I also spent five days, you know, traveling around over Christmas, Brampton, High Park area in Toronto, the King's Way in Toronto, and Markham. And there's a lot of streets in there that are four-way stops, that, you know, don't have the warrants both ways, but they keep the neighborhood slow. They really work. They keep you really slow. And I don't want to tell anybody to do a rolling stop through a stop sign, but even if someone does a rolling stop, like a California stop through a stop sign, that still makes the car a lot slower than going 40 kilometers per hour over the speed humps that we have. And it also keeps the aesthetic value of the neighborhoods without having speed humps everywhere. There were no speed humps in the King's Way in downtown Toronto, no speed humps in High Park in downtown Toronto. They kept the neighborhood slow, and to me, that was really effective. I don't know how those four-way stops all through there came about, if they were built that way right from the get-go, or if they were put that way, voted at city council in Toronto the same way we're voting tonight. But they are effective, and they worked, and cars were going slow through those neighborhoods, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the slippery slope. We have arrived. So, I think that, first of all, I'm not in any way suggesting that the concerns that Counselor Hutchinson has heard about are not valid. They certainly are. We've heard from staff that our traffic calming policies require work. They need to be revised, they need to be updated. So, we have two choices between, before us tonight. One is, we can simply keep overriding the policy, which effectively means that there's no policy, which means that it just becomes slapdash, and, you know, just whoever, whoever we hear from, that's where we essentially end up becoming the traffic department. Or, we can work with staff to actually revise that policy, and then maybe we can reapply it to the situation that Counselor Hutchinson has brought forward. And perhaps, under that new policy, maybe that that's, there's an opportunity for an effective solution. I was very clear that the last time that I voted for this, it was an exception. I do not believe these two are the same situation. I believe that the situation that Counselor Chappell brought to us was unique. It was in a community under development, there was an opening up of a reward of a road that was creating a speed zone, and policy couldn't react quickly enough. This is not the same issue. This is a very valid concern, but let's face it, I bet every one of you around the table could provide two or three very valid concerns that are just like the one that's before us. So, we have a choice. Personally, I think that the best thing for us to do is work with staff and come up with a policy that works, and then it can be applied uniformly and fairly and effectively across the community. So, with that said, I appreciate the concern that Counselor Hutchinson has brought forward, but for that reason, I would prefer that we vote against this motion, and instead work within those policy refinements and revisements in order to be able to address this in policy. Thank you.
I return the chair to you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I can think of an area in my district that also needs traffic calming, and that has much higher traffic levels and much higher danger to children. In fact, so high that because of the public out demands, I specifically requested traffic calming on it from staff in 2018, and did not get it. Was told to wait for their active transportation mask plan. It came, I'm talking about Johnson Street below Division, where the, where the roads widens, and the speeds are 80 kilometers an hour, and there's a school right there, and that's where my kids go to school. I resisted the temptation to take this route, despite the public outcry, and did what the mayor suggested, waited and hoped that the policy would catch up, or that the traffic calming would one day come, or that the bike lane would be extended and ballards would be installed, which would act also as traffic calming, or something would be done. I'm still patiently waiting. At some point, I might, I may have to act. But the way I see this, this is like a piece of pumpkin pie at Christmas. So, you've got 12 family members, and there's 12 slices, or, see, you've got 15 family members, and there's 12 slices of pie. Not everybody likes pumpkin pie, but the people that get the pie are the first 12 that line up at the crowded table. Especially if it's a potluck, you'll see this, someone will bring a pie, but there's not enough for everybody, so it's only the first eight people that get pie, right? That's what's happening here. So, Counselor Chappell got a slice of pie, Counselor Hutchinson's are going to get a slice of pie, a couple others will get slices of pie, and then we're going to run out of pie. So, you know, because we can't keep doing this, like the mayor says. So, we've created an injustice here. I, despite that, think a couple of stop signs on Baggett Street in this section is dangerous. You know, what's the harm? Break the rule one more time? But we're going to run out of pie, and it's probably not going to be before I get traffic calming on a much more dangerous stretch in my district. So, what do I tell my constituents? I supported someone else's helping themselves to the pie, but I didn't save any pie for them. So, it's kind of sad, but I am going to vote for the motion.
Okay. Next on my list is Counselor Kiley.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. Pumpkin over apple at the Stroud household? Okay. So, I'm wondering how long it would take to develop some of the policies that we're talking about, to make the improvements that I think we all agree need to be made? How long would it take to first just develop them, and then after that, we can talk a bit about implementation time?
Through you, your worship. The intent is that the transportation staff will bring forward a report in April that will include some recommendations for traffic calming measures that can be installed that are, that are faster to install and more effective than stop signs as traffic calming solutions. The implementation, by design, if we get it right, should be able to happen relatively quickly, then it'll just be a volume issue. So, I think we can have something this spring that will give us a good place to get started.
Okay. So, we start the process in April, which is, I think, very quick, and I'm glad to hear that. But what I'm wondering at, and what I'm ultimately going to try to get to in my mind, is if we're going to find the situation again, even with new policy, if people will see something in their district, "Oh, I want flower planters that bump out the street to slow down traffic," which is much quicker than stop signs, or whatever the new approaches may be, if we'll find ourselves in the same if we'll find ourselves in the same conundrum where we see a street that we think is warranted, our residents might agree, but the new policy doesn't have the warrants? What do we do then?
Through you, your worship. It may well, it may well result in that. I mean, ultimately, we have to have some criteria by which we assess. Otherwise, there's no purpose. So, and council will have to consider that. And ultimately, I'm hoping if, if we have some new policy, and it's approved, that we would all be able to explain the rationale if something doesn't meet those, those warrants, and why we might not be able to, to move forward in an area that, that might not fit the new policy regime.
Fair enough. And my final question is, if there were to be new situations like this, even in the new policy world, would it be easier on staff if we did an omnibus motion where colleagues around the horseshoe consult, and each pick one or two intersections, or whatever the case may be, and say, despite the new policy that we agreed to, there are still a few outstanding issues that need to be addressed, and we do a one-time, everyone gets what they want, as opposed to debating for hours, you know, now every other week, about individual situations?
Commissioner Kidd?
Through you, your worship. I, I don't think I can provide an answer to that in this moment.
That, in my view, is a political question that ultimately council would need to wrestle.
All right. Well, I'm not decided yet, I'm still thinking, but I do think new policy is great, and I applaud the speed that it will come at. I'm just concerned that it might not actually resolve the situation that we're in. So I'm thinking about the omnibus as well. For people who are thinking about areas in their district, like I am, maybe we can talk after and put something together to make it a bit more efficient. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Neil?
Yes. I am a little troubled with us doing in an ad hoc way traffic engineering by the seat of our pants. The reality is that, I'm the only one that can remember this far back, but in the 90s, we had a commissioner in the early 90s who was totally opposed to four-way stops. Even, I have to say, when they were warranted. After he left, there was just a deluge of four-way stop requests that came in. And there was not, what didn't seem like a lot of criteria application. And what we ended up with was all kinds of councillors being lobbied with eight names on a petition, and putting in a motion to have, create a four-way stop. And let's keep in mind, we've learned a lot about environmental impacts of four-way stops. And if we're doing it just to please our constituents, and endorsing four-way stops all, all the way across the city, we are creating the problem environmentally that we're trying to address. Because four-way stops are not the best environmentally way to deal with traffic. And I can't even remember how I voted last, last council. I think I probably was convinced that this was a one-off. But it won't necessarily be a one-off if all of us come forward, if the expectation of our constituents is such that we, you know, we get a 12 names on a piece of paper, and suddenly, we're the traffic engineers recommending the changes. I, I think going through the process of flagging things for our, our staff for consideration makes sense. But to just do it on a kind of slapdash, ad hoc way, I don't think serves the community well, and it doesn't serve the environment well. So I reluctantly will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you. councillor Chappell?
Yes, thank you, through your, your worship. I do have a comment to make, but I would like to propose a friendly amendment. Having recognized the whereas clause, the last one, I would like to propose changing the word bikers to cyclists. And then...
Thank, thank you for that, councillor Chappell. Okay. We'll take, we'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
If it's a friendly amendment, we won't have to put it on, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to comment on this, this motion, and I, I think it's courageous for all of us to bring forward issues representing our constituents. And although I was not in favor of the pathway for purposes of the greater good of the, the network of active transportation, I sincerely appreciate what councillor Hutchinson has brought forward, and that's the concerns of his constituents. And maybe there needs to be a policy that we each get a political stop sign a year. I don't know, but there certainly is a reliance on us as community leaders to address the concerns of our constituents. And it's with that, I take great pride in supporting councillor Hutchinson and his motion.
Thank you. councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So, this one's frustrating, for obviously all the reasons that have been mentioned before, but as much as we're one city, and I'm a big proponent of that, there's also 12 unique districts within the city. So, in my own personal experience, I can say that I've had a lot of residents of my district bring forward over, let's say, the last five years. And it seems to be a theme of it's the same street. So you submit those streets, they go for review, and it comes back, and it's like, "Oh, sorry, those are the streets, they didn't make the cut." Well, to be quite honest, I can't compete with, let's say, downtown Kingston for traffic volume. So when it comes to this list, and looking at it citywide, it's, some of the outskirts districts are never going to make the cut for that traffic calming. You're just never gonna, you're never gonna breach that, because your daily count was maybe 35 cars on that road versus a daily count which would be hit in 10 minutes downtown Kingston. So having been around the table now for four or five years, I can see that there's obviously something wrong with the policy, because I can continually submit the same streets, and I get the same answer. And then you almost feel like, "Well, do I submit that one again? Because it's the big issue, but I already know it's not going to make it." Or do I pick something else, which? So it's like you've got issues that are being brought forward to you in your unique district, which you live in, and your neighbours and friends with everybody there, and they're constantly bringing them to you, and you're not really giving them a result. And you're not even really giving them an answer as to why you can't get a result. So I understand that frustration. I think everybody around this table does. Part of the problem there is that what do you do when the policy's broken? Or the policy's not working? Well, then you end up with this situation. And when is it going to end? Well, it's going to end when we have a policy that recognizes that we do have 12 unique areas in the city. And in each one of those areas, there are going to be residential concerns in a certain area. I can go back to an email I got the other day, where it was basically like, "Hey, you know what? We moved to this area, it's great, but all around this other area, all the roads are 40 kilometres an hour, but ours isn't, and it's off this subdivision. How long's it going to take to get a 40 kilometre an hour sign there?" Well, it's now been going on almost nine months. So you think something as simple as putting up a sign that says 40 kilometres an hour is simple? It's not, apparently. It takes almost a year. So when you're a representative of that district, and you have to go back with that answer and say, "It takes us nine months to a year to put up a sign that says 40 kilometres an hour, because of the policies that are in place", you feel a little silly, because you really don't understand why it would take that long. So in this instance, I think I will support it. And the reason is, is because we know the policy's broken. I've tried, as councillor Stroud mentioned now, probably for four years, to address some issues, and they're still ongoing. And so I did a little bit of research, and I went back and spoke to a couple former councillors, and looked at some notes, and realized that, and it's not just in my district, but in some districts, these issues have persisted for sometimes 10 to 15 years. So how can you have an issue that can persist for so long that the public recognizes, and we can't solve it in 10 or 15 years? That just kind of, it gets frustrating. And then what that does is that disengages the public, because they're like, "Well, I've gone to now two or three different people just to address this one safety issue in this area, that the entire community could come together, and there's probably been six petitions on it, and nothing has changed in that time period." That, to me, tells me there's a big issue with how we're actually approaching these issues. And maybe in this instance is, I don't think, as in many things, that there's a one-size-fits-all traffic policy that you can apply across the city. Just like when you look at the tree bylaw. There's the urban tree bylaw, and there's the rural tree bylaw. So you can't go, "Here's our traffic policy, city of Kingston. Oh, and we'll, we'll treat the rural area, and the semi-urban area, and the semi-rural areas all the same as the downtown of Kingston." That does not work, because I can guarantee you right now, the roads that we have issues on are never going to reach the barrier that it takes to actually get the traffic coming. And then that brings up the whole other debate of what the residents actually want as traffic coming, because I can tell you right now, there's six speed bumps on Rose Abbey Drive that everybody hate, or, sorry, Greenwood Park Drive, that everybody hates. And it's something where that went through the whole process. But now they're there, and the entire community doesn't like them. And part of the rationale for that is...
30 seconds.
Because you put all those speed bumps on what's supposed to be the main throughfare, but all of a sudden, everybody's now cutting down the little side streets where kids are playing, and there's blind corners. So did you reduce the speed on that main stretch? Certainly you did, by, I think the note said, 3 kilometres an hour. But you pushed all those speeders and all those high-speed vehicles now onto little side streets. So you, you, you didn't fix the problem, you moved it. And that's an issue with the policy. So I think until the policy's corrected, we're going to see more of these. So let's, let's expedite the correcting of that policy. Thank you.
Okay. Nobody else wishes to speak? councillor Hutchison? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor McLaren?
Thank you. So just a few points that seem to be made that need a little bit of clarification. At one point, somebody had mentioned that rolling stops don't work. I beg to differ. If experts are saying that, they don't understand physics. Because if you get hit by a slower-moving car relative to a faster-moving car, you have a better chance of survival. So rolling stops keep, as councillor Sennec said, a neighbourhood slower. And this is what we're talking about here. If we have a policy that doesn't recognize that, that is indicative of the framers of that policy not having the same values as the democratic people who live in that district or in that area. And when there's a discrepancy between them, as councillor Bohm has just said, it means that the policy is flawed, and needs to be amended, or changed, or replaced entirely. And if that takes so much time that we're risking other people's lives because we're allowing faster traffic when we couldn't, when we can actually pretty much stop it overnight, or slow it down overnight, then that's a bit of a dereliction of our duty. This isn't an ad hoc way of solving our problems. This is a precise way of solving particular problems that have been around for a very long time. And as such, that's what's needed when policy doesn't quite work, and when it doesn't align with the policy, with the values of the people who actually live and have to deal with this in that area. So of course, I'm going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hutchinson, you have the last word.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to thank, well, everybody, because there's valid points on all sides. But particularly councillor Bohm described the frustrations and the nature of the problem. He has a specific take on it, in addition to his general understanding. But I've been doing a similar thing for a number of years. I'm not doing this simply to please people. That comes into it, of course. I don't think I'm going to get any great kudos for it. But because, you know, 142 people signed this petition. It says 125, but I was trying to be conservative, and, you know, not make councillor Chappell feel too bad. But, because he only got 100. So the, but, but because it's been persistent for so many years, and something needs to be done, as staff have said, they recognize that the policy has not been properly responding. So this was, and I committed in this last election turn to saying, "Okay, I'm going to, I'll try and do something about this." Even though I know what the research says, I know what the policy is, you know, I've talked, I've read the stuff, because I used to be on EITP. And however, I think there are benefits to, to stop signs. And, you know, we were looking at it, but what I'm asking council to do is give relief now. Because there's no guarantee how that policy's going to, when it's coming, how, I, I believe they're going to try for spring, okay, don't get me wrong. But how it's going to work out, right? And whether it'll be positive. And so why would I want it now? Well, because a bird in the hand is better than one, two, three, or a dozen in the bush. Not doing me any good, right? So, you know, one other technical thing is this is on a bus route. The bus has to go up the little short thing up north, as you recognize from the motion. And it has to turn, so actually having a stop sign there, I think, will help the bus do what it needs to do, if we're going to talk about active transportation. Right now, there's no stopping that traffic coming down Baguette Street. So, and, you know, if you go out, the thing that really got people going is they went outside to find like a half a dozen blue boxes just blasted off the boulevard. Because somebody went up, you could see the trial tracks up over the curbs, and onto what is already a bulb there. It's, it's a problem. And I'm just looking for a solution. If staff at some point in the future comes up with a better solution, then, you know, I'm committed to trying to explain that to the residents. But right now, we need some relief, and I hope people will vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's 10:43, so first, before we vote on new motion number two, asked for motion to extend the meeting to finish the agenda, moved by deputy mayor Ostroff, seconded by councillor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. So now we will do the vote on new motion number two. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 2. Okay. Okay. Are there any notices to motion? Okay. Mr. Clercoss for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Doherty, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2019-03 held Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 be confirmed.
Please vote.
Waiting for one. Still waiting for one vote, please.
And that carries. Okay, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clercoss for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Hill, that bylaws 1 through 4 and 8 through 19 be given their first and second reading.
Please vote.
Waiting for one vote.
And that carries.
Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Hill, that clause 11.36 of bylaw number 2010-1, as amended, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 4 three readings.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Hill, that bylaws 4 through 19 be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Motion adjourned, please. Moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff.
Waiting for one vote, please.
And we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Okay.